You rebuild the river going through town.
Okay, we're recording right now because this thing has been on the fritz and it's gonna... So, maybe I can pause it. Okay, I'll pause it.
What do we got on our agenda that we can get started with?
I think we can stay right on script.
Unclean property, yeah.
Well, there's three of us, so we can actually start it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have a corner, so. He'll be here in fifteen, twenty minutes. Call him once or two. What's that? Yeah?
Okay. Are you gonna call him? Yeah.
I can't.
Call Dan now.
Did that Darren Schmidt call you? No, I tell him to call Tom.
No, he didn't.
Cause we've got some unclaimed property and then this guy had moved away from town. Contacting the.
Okay, yeah, we'll ask Don, she should be in here. Yeah, you're right, right there.
Hey, Dan, just a reminder, the meeting starts at eight and.
Oh, like to call this meeting to order?
This is killing me.
God, I don't know why anybody wants to start.
Nope. And it's from yesterday. It's a warm-up from yesterday.
Yeah, I will, would you just a second, I'm sending Dan over.
Is Jean coming?
Jean is on his way too.
He's on his way.
Alright, ten o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order, we'll start with a pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Uh, approval of the agenda, we have any additions or?
Anybody wanna add anything?
Other than Jean?
Yeah, well, the agenda. We'll put him at eight fifteen.
Unclean property.
I have no more.
I'm trying to get Nancy to go along without some days.
We have no additions, so then we have a.
Owe to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, and no other discussion, so. Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Although I also motion carried, approval of minutes, uh, we'll start with ten, one, twenty-five.
Yeah, I was glad they cut that twenty-three kilovolts.
Yes, yes. Got it.
But, but it is a transmission line for wind towers.
Right.
Do we have a change in it?
Yeah.
Well, before, I had twenty-three.
There's twenty-two, two hundred and thirty. Two hundred and thirty K, not twenty-three.
Oh, okay. Alright, so that's fixed though.
Yep.
Alright. Anything else on that one? Anyways, so we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
One second.
Any discussion, anything? Seeing none, Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Although I also. Minutes approved, um. October sixth, special meeting. We have a motion to approve or discussion of.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second for.
Okay, discussion, anybody have any changes or additions or corrections?
Was it, we did do two seventeen, okay, yeah, but then we ended up doing two oh eight, yeah.
Yep, yeah, we had to do the two oh eight because it didn't fit.
Cause it didn't fit, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, cause he rescinded that.
Yep.
Yep.
And then we got it down.
That was the numbers that you came back that fit.
After the, after the break, yep.
That's what we did. Any more discussion? Seeing none, Casey, I believe.
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Dan, or Mark?
Aye.
Although I also, minutes of ten, six, twenty-five approved. Okay. Totally forgot, I'll be there soon. That's what we, I did, there's three of us.
We have a section.
Okay, unclaimed property request, well, let's start with Don on that, see what he wanna do.
Yep.
Okay, basically, all I need is permission to send these five checks to unclaimed property if they're not claimed by the owners by October twentieth. I put an October twentieth deadline on. Forgetting that I always have to get these approved by you guys and we're five days early. So if you just wanna make some kind of a motion that if they're not unclaimed, if they're not claimed by October twentieth, twentieth, they'll go to unclaimed property.
Don, the only question I have on, do you, do you, what's the original date of the issue on these checks?
Um, they would all be the end of twenty-two, beginning of twenty-three.
Okay.
I believe. Best guess without actual dates.
Did you get contacted by Darren Schmidt? Oh, cause I sent him information that his name was on this list.
Oh, yeah, no, nobody's contacted me, so.
Well, I'll make that motion if they're not. By October twentieth. Till recent.
And I'll second it. Okay, any more discussion? Is there?
You have a process to cancel these checks before you issue the new one and whatnot.
And then I wait for seven days.
Yes.
And then we, we issue, I just will write a big check to, um.
Unclaimed.
Unclaimed for all the.
You have a, you have a process for this.
Yes, and theoretically, I did not remember this until it was too late, I don't have to send no official notices to these guys if it's under twenty-five dollars, but.
Correct. So none of them.
By the time they get this, they've gotten three notices or two notices by the time they get this official one. I make a good attempt to get a hold of people, but.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Although I also motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Why does it say Fairborn? Just go down.
Uh, Hyatt Department, I just, pardon?
You might just go down the list of the other business?
Yeah, because, uh, Hyatt Department, I texted, Rachel's on the way over, she, they were late too, so. State Department.
Oh, we've got a pretty.
Yeah, um. Okay, planning, zoning, let's all later, let's go to the State Fairbord delegate, uh. What we've done, uh. The board selects, uh. In the past, we've always selected Gary Canal as our representative. He's on the board up there, so, do we have a motion for a delegate?
If Gary's interested?
He has been, he's still on the.
Okay, I'll move that.
I'll second it. Any other discussion on it?
And Pierce seconded.
Yep.
No other discussion, Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Although I also. Okay, county nurse quarterly report, what do we do there?
I'll move over the county nurse.
Do we have it in here?
Yeah, it's right behind my State Fair stuff.
Okay.
I remember Heidi.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Alright, seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Although I also. Sheriff's September review, revenues of thirty-seven, nine, sixty-one, sixty-four, we have a motion to accept.
All motion to accept their September revenues? Or October revenues, sorry.
Sheriff's September revenue.
It's actually September.
September of thirty-seven.
Okay, October's the first.
They bill it in October, but it's.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Just one clarification, this is the, this is the. The federal, the federal contract, right?
Along with the federal contact, all their revenues together?
It's on the revenue for the month, cause it's DOCRs on here for the state, cause we're housing a few state inmates right now, and then there's the federal fees.
Okay.
For transports and for housing.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Although I also, that motion carried.
Is that moving in our packet, Carmen, like next, we have the perfect court revenue, are we, should we not be approving that as well? I know it's always kind of informational, but.
Yeah, and.
Do we have to?
No, it would be up to you guys, if you wanna approve it, I don't think anybody ever even gave me copies before, because we signed that contract with the state and it's actually.
That's what, I just didn't know.
I've just given it to you for information, but it's.
I think that contract, cause the state covers that.
I would think the contract, but yeah, it's just always in here, so.
And that's what you approve, yeah.
Okay.
So it's just informational.
We could start with.
Just to make note, you do have an invite to the. You got an invite, I just wanna make sure that.
I haven't got that far yet. I got one from more engineering too.
Cause I know you don't have enough to do.
Okay.
October thirtieth.
We wanna wait for Jean with that aspect?
Yeah, I don't know, I feel we should, if.
Okay, we'll give him a few minutes and. Other than that, that's, uh. We can take a five-minute recess or a ten-minute recess, whatever, until he gets here, if we wanna wait for that. Rachel's on the way, we don't have that.
Not really anything else we can.
And everything else is time sensitive, so.
Yes, we could go over this mandatory training that we're gonna do at the end of the month.
Yeah, I also.
Okay, so are we taking a break or not?
It's up to the board, you guys wanna take a break or whatever? You wanna go through the mandatory?
I can step out for two seconds, but if not.
Okay, well, let's take a recess, then, I told Jean to get some, give him about five minutes, he'll be here. I got a question for Tom anyways, so.
Don't know what to do when we have a bunch of deals.
Well, yeah.
No doubt, that's a huge relief.
Huge.
Now we got the rewrite, so that's probably gonna take a lot of time too.
Oh. Oh, Jen's here. Man, Jen.
That's two strikes. My mother's not alive anymore, so. Next month will be better.
No, that's something you ask Jen. Yeah, Jen would be the one.
Yeah, Mark.
I'm just kinda commissioning her this morning. Well, it makes me feel a little better. We'll text direct, see if I can, I have a show that's gonna be, so we can go to her oncology, don't forget, it's Mark. I text direct and he goes, yeah, I pick up at eight fifteen, it's like, I think the meeting starts at. He goes, there you look, oh, you're right, yeah, I don't even, and yeah, so I look again. Oh, my god, mine. Where's it kind of? My phone even gave me the reminder and I'm gone. Yeah, I know, I got your Scotty commission meeting this morning.
But that eight didn't even.
I never looked past that, I just went, oh, this commission meeting.
Carmen, just, the only thing on here, that ten o'clock's a hard bit of time, right, for that?
That's the problem, yes, it was a hard time and I couldn't work around it.
We're in recess, so whenever you're ready, they're back, you can call it back to order.
Who's back?
Jamie and Casey.
Whenever they get back.
They back in the room.
Where you at on here?
This room.
Um.
So we got all that stuff taken care of, all of this stuff taken care of.
We're right down, we're right down to our stairs. And Rachel's on the way, I had to call Darren, or Dan Aaron's, he forgot, and so did Rachel.
Oh, yeah, Gary Canal.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, we have.
Yeah, he's still on the board, so I'm sure he's. He had that left job.
Good morning.
Oh, hi.
Like, don't have my mom's on wrong anymore to remind me.
He's on his own. Get all done harder, then? Just waiting on corn?
We have corn, some bars. Done with soybeans, they got some chickpeas they're doing. I don't know how much that, they got a lot, quite a bit. Got a lot of corn. Just gotta get the stuff that's on the ground, gotta get them chickpeas done.
Get them, yeah, get the stuff done.
Get some.
Tough to get to.
Picking them up then.
Yeah, so are chickpeas the same thing as like the gomano beans?
I don't even know, yeah, it's a, like a. Like a pea, like in, one in a pod.
Okay.
They put them like in salads.
Very edible, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And, you know.
Hummus, yeah.
And your. Combine has gotta be cleaned out, there can't be a soybean on there. Good morning.
Soybeans are toxic to eat.
Oh, and you mean.
She'll give us the, well, we need.
Soybeans are toxic to eat, as if you eat them, you're off.
Okay, we'll reconvene. And the rest of my commission will get me. Where were we, what's next, Hyatt Department?
We're, uh, we're gonna.
Did agenda minutes and other business, otherwise we're pretty much done.
You got that all done?
Tom is here from, to help us with the Aztec bill and, uh, Rachel's on the way for the, uh. Commission to bid process, so that's where we're at. So you can start with Tom.
Go ahead, Tom.
Right here. Yeah, good morning commissioners, um, here to give you an update on that chip seal project. I brought Jordan Nels with me today, he's our transportation group leader, um, so he's got a little more of the technical information in leading the actual project, so. Hopefully answer all your questions today, um, but yeah, to give you an update, I guess that last pay application you have in front of you was for the five eighteen, uh, five hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. And that has quantities up through September sixteenth. On there, so not complete project yet, um, the contract amount is eight hundred and twenty-four thousand. And it'll be slightly above that based on estimated quantities, um. As far as what's being done out there, but the con, as of today, the project is hundred percent complete. As soon as we check the payment marking that they should have finished up last night, so should be all complete after today. Um, and yeah, they've been diligent on, you know, responding to us to get that all corrected as soon as possible.
The marking on twenty-seven?
Yep, yep, they just finished that up last night.
Okay, well, good, cause I had a conversation with my county sheriff and I said, don't pull me over because I'm swerving all over the road, I'm following the lines.
No, it was definitely wavy and, you know, outside the typical standard and the, and the spec, the spec has like a two-inch minimum, which is a little bit impossible to meet sometimes.
Yeah, I seen them out there. Working on it, so.
I want you guys to explain too about, uh, you know, the process about, you know, paying these bills and how they go about it. Also, the warranty things that you explained to me too, I would like the rest of the commission to hear all that too, so.
Yep, so these, uh, bigger projects where they're bid through us using this EJ CDC agreement. Payments is all set up in that contract as far as what the owner of the county is required to do for the contractor. Um, essentially, when you get this pay estimate, we've gone through all those items that are listed in the spreadsheet attached to it. So we made sure the certifications are attached to, um, each item that we're essentially measuring as approved and putting on that pay estimate. So when it gets to you, we've reviewed everything and accepted it as they've done it to spec. The chip seal's a little, um, different on this one, cause it is a warranty type period. Essentially, we do a controlled test strip of a thousand feet. And then in May, we'll look at that test strip compared to the other, um, you know, the nineteen miles on the road. And then if there's any areas that need to be corrected, they correct it at that point. Um, and we withhold ten percent retainage on the contract, so they don't get that ten percent retainage until May, when everything's, um, approved essentially. But if there are areas to be corrected, that can still happen next year.
Okay, so you guys felt that the hill south of town was adequate, cause it's worse than it was before?
Yeah, I guess I did drive through it, um, it was before they swept and fog sealed it, and I think it's, um, kind of an issue of the transverse cracking that's happening. And you're coming, it wasn't more northbound?
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah, I think, cause you're slowing down for that curve and you're coming down the hill a little bit and you're slowing, I think it slows down to forty-five there.
Well, there's no speed limit signs, there's never been speed limit signs in my entire life, that I have asked to probably have put out there, because there's never, ever been signs. There's signs going to get to Oliver County, but not Worsor County side.
Okay, yeah, and that's why I was wondering if maybe just that, that action of the vehicles were kind of pushing.
I watched them do it that day and like you can see the washboards in it, I, I watched the crew do it that day and they were just, they were going too fast. But our blades, I guess, can shave them off this winter and then we can see what we can do about it in May when it needs to be fixed.
Yeah, we can look at that spot, you know, specifically, um, in the spring again. Um, essentially, what we're looking for is just if there's areas where chips didn't really get attached, like if they got mounted up.
They had too much chip, baby, I hear you back there.
Northbound, we're still bouncing from Oliver's gravel road.
Oh, don't worry, ours aren't much better. You guys feel, I'll just spread the word that we feel it's okay, so.
Right, and that's where, yeah, so that warranty period kind of covers us if there's something that shows up in that time, or yeah, if we really look at it, we can do a couple different, you know, types of testing on there too, like run through it. It's hard to know what was there beforehand, I guess, probably in that case, if it's mumpy.
That's the hard part, is those that drive it every day, and I don't drive it every day, I joke, y'all, but it's worse than it, they made it worse, so.
And that's where, we've had cases in the past where there's those transverse cracks and you're really only adding a quarter inch to maybe the surface, but yeah, that crack kind of stays there, so it does, it can significantly make it feel worse.
Well, and that twenty-seven south with the bridge and just the pavement, so it's gonna need an overlay eventually. It's, but it's, whatever.
Tom, just based on what's in front of us here, you said the project's complete.
As of today, yeah, this would be a progress, um, payment, just through middle of September.
There's still three hundred thousand that remains to be paid.
Yeah.
Of that is fifty-eight thousand in retainage, and I just, I do know, I did notice that you had three days of liquidated damages that are in there, so will that be, will, will that? The liquidated damages, will that be withheld from the retainage at the end, or how does that all work?
So the liquidated damages will actually be deducted from all payments, they won't get that paid at all. Um, the retainage will be held until that warranty period of May, um, so that, it'll end up being eighty-three thousand. Will be held that, until the project's completely final next May.
Okay.
But the liquidated damages will end up with, uh, what do we have, sixteen days, um, through the twenty-ninth is when we sent the actual substantial completion.
That was the initial liquidated damages, but then there's more, correct?
Okay.
Like. Yeah, there will.
There's sixteen days now, not three, right?
Yeah, total, there should be sixteen days.
That's not factored into this sheet yet, correct?
Well, this was old that we got last meeting, so I don't know if, I think, is the new one in here, no, so we. We haven't sent the second one.
But even the prior liquidated, I haven't sent factored in here yet either.
That'll come out of the trio too.
Yep.
Do we have contract obligations on the five eighteen, three fifteen?
So the contract is set up where it should be paid to the contractor within ten days of being presented to you. So, yeah, we, we shouldn't, you know, wait on these, as they come through, too long, you're fine, typically, we'll be like monthly, give you the pay estimates, but yeah, when these do come through, um, we should be pretty prompt if there are questions. And they can always have some withheld from them or something like that.
And if we didn't have the questions with the striping that we had, we would have paid it, or likely agreed to pay it last meeting, but there was significant reasons we held it, so.
And the washboard.
I give up on the washboards.
But there was, that was our concern.
It was, yeah.
We had multiple concerns and it was a large payment.
Yep, exactly, and that's where, yeah, just to, you know. Clarify the process exactly, when we give you these and submit, um, our recommendation for it, that, that's all for items that have to be approved by us and essentially are done on the project. Nothing, if there's anything out there yet, it probably wouldn't show up in our, our recommendation at that point, some stuff can linger out there a long time.
I'd make the motion though, at this point, then, to pay the payment recommended by, by the engineer of five eighteen, three fifteen, fifty-nine.
And I'll second.
You can say they add, Mark just added it to our bills over here too.
So we need that separate or can it just be?
I'd just like to get it done if we're, we're within ten days or whatever, I'd like you to.
Well, as long as you guys have this motion to approve it, it'll be in with the bills.
But I would like you to, you know, expedite this one and get it done, not wait till the end of the month or whatever.
Oh, no, no, we don't wait, we do it today.
Okay, I appreciate that, so. Not a problem.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Hi, Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Anything else?
Nope, not until the, the county road request.
You're, you're gonna stick around with that, uh, road, uh, there's, might be questions on that, uh.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, one with Joe Schut and stuff, so.
Yep.
Where we're, where we're gonna. Where we're, where we're gonna be at, I'm sure you'll have some questions that you'll have to answer on that for us, so.
Yeah, now, we'll find a do a little better job when you get these big invoices to be, you know, here at the meetings. So just kind of learning, but yeah, if you ever want to take a break and give me a thought.
I don't think there was a terribly big question on the, the bill itself. It was more of the work to justify the bill. So I, I don't feel you need to apologize. I, I think we just more simply had questions on the actual project itself.
So your concerns were if the work they done created the washboard.
Correct.
More so.
And the striping. The striping was the major thing, yes.
Well, the washboard's probably created the striping.
No, the stripes actually straightened that.
All the way up.
Well, the other thing too, it's like, it would be, you know, like having Tom here to explain how the process works, I mean, we all got a little bit more education on how it all works too, so.
Hey, ever heard any explanation of that striping went, went on? No?
Yeah, a little bit. They talked about the, the low light condition when they were out there and they couldn't see the tabs. That was the explanation that they gave to me.
I'm just curious, I just.
It was quite entertaining to drive.
They did correct it, so.
Yep, they spent, I spent about three days total, I think, out on that one stretch of road correcting. And we, we marked about 15 spots at least the other day. And had them correct it and then made sure that they corrected anything that they didn't think was correct either. So hopefully, as of yesterday, it's good.
And you really like noticed the difference when they went back and added the second, like, layer? Because then you could really see where the difference in the lines were. I'm like, okay, this is.
Yeah, they're.
I drove 48 the other day and I was like, I'm gonna start paying attention to the actual, and really, road lines are, they're really not as straight as you think they are.
You know, but, but that was bad.
That was really bad.
Well, I, I run into that too, just a little bit of discussion on that. It's like paving, you know, like I, when I look at paving, I'm like expecting them to be like the top of this table when they're done. And when I go to go look at new paving jobs that have been done, they're not.
But even 27, when they overlaid it last year, I'm like, I don't think this is a fantastic job. It, it, exactly, it's a lot. I, I thought they would have leveled some things out more before they overlaid, but they didn't, so, but that was pre you guys.
Well, nine o'clock thing, I suppose we should wait till nine o'clock.
Hopefully Rachel.
Get permission to bid motor grader.
She's not here yet, but we can.
Yeah, that one too. Anything else, Tom? Sorry, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Oh my boy.
Yeah, we.
We've only got two items left that we can do without some people showing up.
I think we can do vouchers.
We could do our vouchers in our portfolio options, I guess.
Go ahead and do vouchers.
Mark, I'll just leave the Aztec bill on top. Does that work?
Okay. Want me to drop it or we go till 9:30 also? Public key notice. Extended contract. It should be here. See, this eight o'clock thing even messes up other people, not just me.
There's only, I was, I was in, I hear you.
Yeah, he tattled. I have, I have absolutely no excuse.
I have a message to you and he said he's on the phone.
My phone, my phone was even.
He even printed it.
Yeah, my phone was even beeping this morning and I go, yeah, I know I got a commission need. I just hit it. Didn't look at, I didn't read it. It says right on there, eight o'clock.
I messaged, oh, and he's early too. I think shit.
Did they, uh, fix up that crossing, North Haysam? Creek Crossing, Cross Animal Creek?
I don't think they go back to that. We probably talked about it last week, right? Which I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know if they went back there.
Oh, okay, and that's fine. Even Richard said he.
They were going to finish, uh, they were looking at the gravel and bringing down that.
Same thing.
Yeah, because the scene, he's got a pipe there and.
I don't think he's back.
Yeah, I called Richard, talked to him. Think he's gonna be surprised at what he's hitting. Yeah, I tried to drive through there with my pickup. Yeah, right. Were you up there?
No.
Oh. I don't know, but basically needed a tractor to drive through there. I didn't go through with my pickup. I went in and then my pickup hit the other side and I said, no, I'm not wrecking my, my truck.
Where are you talking, Jean?
Up, up the haze on about four miles and you go west, it's right north of, I think it's a Duett, I believe, is it now?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Isby Mathias?
Yeah.
There's some property back in there that, a couple of landowners crossed the Animal Creek. And it's, uh, it's a section lane. But, uh.
Not possible.
It was not good. There's, you weren't going through there with any better tractor, put it that way. And, uh, there's a landowner who's got bales on the north side, well. I'm not sure how he was. He mentioned there was a possibility of a way to get him out of there, but not on the road. But he's in no rush. He said, as long as he can get in there.
Awesome, they'll be back up here when they need that.
Yep.
Back or?
That's why I, I also, yeah, because I think we both talked and, yeah, I told them, all right, no, 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 no. Don't need to be done today. Yeah, there's, there's gotta be another way because the other producer, he's gotta drive his, um, combines through there. There's no way he'd go through there. So there's, must be a way around across some land or something. I don't know. I know I wouldn't drive our combine through there. Put tracks on. Neat. It, it's, it's so, so steep, so you just drop in and, yeah. I don't know if you could get the header high enough to, when you get to the other side. Anyway. We get a refund? We will.
Every month.
Pardon?
Every month.
Oh, we're, we're just finishing.
Done vouchers.
I'm gonna have a, we're gonna adjourn here real quick.
You were the only one that didn't remember too.
Thanks for mentioning that.
There was probably two of us that were.
I did not remember. I was late. I got the call again.
But I forgot too, with Mark, I was the one that called.
Rick called me and I answered and went, it's not nine o'clock yet. He said this morning's at eight. What?
When I was in the refresher and heard the phone go off and was got up and looked at the bus car anymore.
On the agenda, we're basically down to, well, 8:45 motor grader one is left to do. And other business is all done. So that's where we're at, basically, the nine o'clock area. And we're doing vouchers right now.
Back to the washboard.
What do you want? We'll give you six more minutes before finishing this.
Yeah, well, just hang in there.
What is this button?
Do you guys have to add the public comment?
I was questioning that. Okay, what do you mean?
Good. I know a lot of local entities after, after the state legislature
Yeah.
had to add, even if it's more of a technicality, had to add their specific agenda, a big line item.
That says public comment.
Public comment. We had to do that at the water board, but I don't know if we have to do that at the county.
The school board did it as well.
I think the city, did the city do it too?
The city was already kind of doing it, I guess.
But they have technically added it on there.
Yeah, they already have it as a specific agenda, but how they, they listed that as being the criteria.
Okay, so like. And we've like, we've allowed public comment always, but it's just putting it on the agenda. I don't know.
Okay, well, extend that question to our state's attorney.
Because I'm thinking that was for more of the other boards. I don't think that was for the county.
And I know Jean, so I'm gonna send a message right now.
There you go. He's just looking at. Well, he's still left his total in his form, I think, that he's charging more for cleaning. But maybe it was because it was fixed. Sometimes it's just the desk. That's probably, that's, I think that was probably the.
Did you guys want to finish this or do we want to pause?
Let's finish. Yeah, so much time to understand.
Yeah, we go to 8:45 and then we're ready on time. I like to get ahead in the next one too.
You'll take the blades, you'll take the whole. Hold on, these sensors, I've got that one on, my pickup. Two sensor, I gotta get it replaced.
Yeah, we got to go with Jean.
Yeah, that would not be pleasant.
Really?
Is one for Jan and one's for Jenny?
Yeah.
They just, same handwriting, it's like same thing?
It's the same, boys. Did you wanna pause the vouchers or should we continue?
I think we're just gonna get into the schedule.
I gotta ask?
I think, we, we talked.
We'll just finish the vouchers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're just gonna have to pause.
We're gonna finish the vouchers. You might as well come forward and sit there. We're gonna put you in the hot seat anyway, I guess. No, you can come up there. Don't be scared. Don't play shy today. Any questions about the vouchers yet?
Yeah.
I don't know if.
Rachel. Got a question. If I'm reading this right. This is a little bit.
Um, I, guys, I pulled a NAPA bill that we're gonna have corrected because none of the totals, any which way, add up. Okay, so it's just NAPA bill? Well, it's one, just one of the NAPA.
Because there's two more here that I already worked through.
Yeah, okay, do we have like a total on that so I can? That's the thing in question is the actual total.
What department is from?
Sheriff.
Sheriff, okay.
NAPA bill from sheriffs was called.
That's why I kinda watch, because like sometimes like, squelching at the pump, it's cheaper.
So do you sell gas? I wanna start a real drift town where the county employees and commissioners can fill gas over there. Oh, that'd really stir it up. Well, my gas prices are supposedly going down, so I don't know what we pay.
Two oh six. That's what I asked, was a dollar eighty-three plus twenty-three, so it's two oh six. But I mean, I always kinda watch it because of the state, because of the sheriff department selling there or not. Couple, three years ago, it was cheaper to fill at the pump than over there, but as a rule, it's been cheaper to fill at the gun shop.
Of what? Do you know what I mean? But it's only twenty-nine cents. I'm just trying to figure out what they offer for twenty-nine cents. Oh, copy, oh, I see what... Not copies of paper, actually, you'd prefer a copy. I'm gonna go into a copy business.
Some of them just look at, you know.
He said he's gonna, he needs to get his teeth back, so he's...
Yeah?
Second thing you might catch on.
So just to be clear, Rachel, you want me to sign this?
I'm pretty much numb to those bills, right?
Not much we can do, Bob.
Nope.
Look at you, Jean, getting your vouchers and being responsible. That's what people, when you're saying, yes, our list of bills is getting longer because we have eighteen voucher numbers, because it's all different. It was a guess. I'm going to approve the bills for holding that now. None of the...
Numbers are...
None of the numbers add up. It, it just needs to be relooked at by the department.
Okay, who seconded that? So we can...
It's not really ass, it's...
It's from Shields, but they're for now, like ten, but it's a couple bucks, but...
But if they have their personal cards down there, like they don't have a... Can they... Oh, is it a person, is it to a person?
Yes.
See that, yeah, they need to use a credit card instead of... Cause yeah, if it's a personal credit card, I don't think you can.
No, Shields has to collect it.
I think we could send it back to them and they would credit it, but it's... He must have needed it for that particular reason, because we have other stuff.
Oh, that is for our, um, we make a payment, um, every year. It's for the bond that we're paying off on the building. And those guys are the ones...
Not just the interest.
Right, we got two bills. That one there, I believe, pays, um, for them taking care of our...
We had a question on that one.
Yeah, this would be our payment.
Oh, I thought that was a different question.
No, that's...
Shields, so Shields has to charge the tax.
It doesn't, any, it doesn't matter if we bought something at Robinson's or probably anywhere, if you're using your personal, you don't have to get taxes.
No, I thought that was a different question.
There. We have like, uh, like Chris cutting shelves or something, I don't know. Do they have to buy them with their credit card? Why do they go to the credit card dealer? Just cause they have to be down there, or how does it work?
Where they buy them at this time?
Shields.
It was one box that I think he picked up.
It's not a big deal, but we end up paying tax for it, don't we?
It must have been an off-brand for one of our other...
For something, yeah.
Yeah, guns, other than what we normally use, you buy that in Boulder.
Which was also in there.
If we had someone who traded you something and, and there he was in a different gun, and we normally use anything that's out there. It's not difficult.
I says, cause I don't remember seeing much of that, so, we see, it's all... We ended up paying tax on the bill, but it was only a couple bucks is all it was.
Yeah, we'll avoid it when we can, okay?
Yeah, not a big deal. You got that other one pulled out, you seconded?
Carmen has it, yeah.
And what's that one?
So it's an Alpha.
Oh, actually, I'll take it back.
It's an Alpha one.
It's a nine L, where it shouldn't be.
None of the totals match up.
I think we're good.
Okay, any further, any questions? We have withheld one bill?
Yep.
Okay, other than that, the one that's gonna be withheld, is there any other discussion? A nun, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jean, I motion pass. Okay, permission to build, permission to bid motor grader.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we are looking for permission to bid one new motor grader for next year. So this would be the sixth motor grader, we certainly have five. We are looking at leasing it. We do not have anything to trade in for that sixth blade. Leasing it would be approximately eighty-nine thousand.
That includes the maintenance and the interest.
Yes, yep, so that would be what they consider like a total machine warranty. So for the six years, eight thousand hours, they cover all of that, the labor, the mileage, anything that would go wrong, unless it's negligence, but... Yep, so that, I mean, that's approximately eighty-nine thousand, obviously, depends on who bids it out, if it would be Butler or RDO, you know, it might vary a little bit, but that's...
Are the specs the same and to, I mean, you offer the same specs to Butler as with RDO?
Yeah, correct, yep, the specs...
Or whoever.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just permission to bid it.
Correct, yeah.
And then we'll cover, we can cover details after that.
What size, what size class blade, and just...
Uh, so the ones we have now, they're all, um, seven, seven-two G P, I believe. So I'm sure it's similar to that.
But like fourteen foot, or...
I think they're sixteen.
Sixteen?
I'm not exactly sure.
And that warranty, it was six years, how many miles?
Eight, eight thousand hours, six years.
Hours?
Yeah.
That's what they typically are, but that'll be included in the bid sheet when we, when they bid them.
Correct, yeah.
There's no guarantee on that at this point, that's why I brought that up. A lot of the details we can cover once we get the bids.
Correct.
I mean, we can say we want specific items in the bid, that's for sure, but...
Well, right, yep, and some, obviously, sometimes Butler doesn't, or, or vice versa, RDO, because obviously typically we get a Butler or a John your blade, but sometimes they can't offer those items, so like, obviously, on the, on the bid spec sheet, yep, they'll let you know of that, and then that bid would be...
Correct.
That would show what's included in there or not.
That'll show us what. I guess my concern's just initially is the eight thousand hours over six years, that's like thirteen hundred hours a year, so a hundred hours a month?
Yes, so, right now, a few of the machines we have that are due up in January of twenty-seven, they're close to six thousand hours right now.
We do typically around eighteen hundred hours a year on a machine, on average.
It's about a hundred fifty hours a month.
Yeah.
I'm going to approve the bidding of this blade.
I'll second it.
I think, yes, like Jean said, there's a lot of specifics that need to be worked out, and I think details that I would like to see changed with Elroy if, if we end up going this road, but...
I wanna see the bids and then ask a lot of these questions.
You can also see what, what they're offering too, what's...
Right.
Correct.
See what's, what's offered, what's out there. What, what, you know, decisions we wanna make at that time, because, you know, it's like, but it's the first step in the process.
Get, get some...
This is, it's a lot more ongoing with, with, uh, three machines do at one time, and it's a, it's a first step in the process to get a plan together to make this, uh, more viable.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jean, I motion pass, get some bids.
So then we would put it in the paper, it'll run for the twenty-one days, so November nineteenth would be the next commission meeting. Can we do ten AM on November nineteenth for bid letting?
Bid opening?
Bid open.
Oh, yeah.
So anything else?
So you can, so if they had could run and we could get the bids and we could, um, we won't, we'd want the bid opening on November nineteenth at whatever, nine o'clock.
Ten, ten AM.
Ten, okay. But the, um, we need a deadline on when the bids need to be in by.
That's your twenty-one days.
Yep, that's the twenty-one, it's, it'll run for twenty-one days, which...
Okay, so the deadline will be...
They have to have them in by ten AM by, on the November nineteenth. That's when you will open them.
Which will also be the opening.
The deadline is twenty...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm following, I, generally, we've had it prior to that date, but, okay. So they could walk in with a bid.
They could, yeah, as long as they have it two days, like four, ten AM.
All right, I'm, I'm okay with that.
The specifics on the bids, Elroy will get that worked out, and we've talked some of that, so...
Yes, yep, and then you'll see, I mean, you'll get...
I did talk to Mark on some of this too, on just different things that we need to look at for financing and stuff.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah, if we could have...
Now, we just have a motion to have. Do you have though?
Cause you don't have to...
Deadline will be November.
June, November eighteenth.
November eighteenth, that's...
We were in the middle of a motion. Moves to approve the bid letting, Pierce sent in?
That one was voted on.
That was the bid, that was just getting the bids. Okay, and everybody said aye, I missed that, all aye.
Yep.
Okay, now what's your new motion?
That, uh, bids are due by ten AM on November nineteenth, and that's when we will be opening the bids on November nineteenth at ten AM.
You made that motion.
And that's...
I made that motion.
That was Mark's motion, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Could you just read back the motion, please?
Pierce moved to approve bids due at ten AM on November nineteen, and bid openings, okay, and bids will be opened at ten AM on November nineteenth.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion?
Do, do you have anything to say yet, Rachel? I thought you were, we're bringing something up there for a minute.
Nope.
Okay, we're good?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jean, I motion pass. Okay, anything else on... All right. County Road twenty, Fifty-Ninth Avenue Southwest, Joe Shute, Joe.
Speaking, come on up too.
Is that this?
Yes.
And they all have a copy of the map?
I didn't bring mine with, I looked at it.
You don't have my copy?
No.
Okay.
What is your request, and what is your proposal?
Well, our request is for Fifty-Ninth Avenue for, see if, if it paved. And I had one question from Randy here, he asked about if they did pave it, if they would pave from the bridge up to that corner on County twenty.
So this goes from the county shop essentially up to like High Plains Concepts, up into that area?
Well, it's...
And farther past that, but that's the general idea.
From the bridge to that corner either.
Correct.
Basically from right here.
Yeah.
So it'd be, the request is to pave from part of County twenty?
Well, it'd be...
It'd be like a quarter mile of County twenty, and then turns on to Fifty-Ninth Avenue.
And then Fifty-Ninth Avenue for...
So Fifty-Ninth Avenue, it's about, it's point nine miles from the corner to the end of it, where that ends. The, and it's about point four from the corner to the bridge, where it's from the pavement ends.
Do you guys want a special assessment district, or started that yet?
Yeah, is that, is that what you guys are looking at, doing as a special assessment, or you're asking the county to do it?
So initially, some of the questions, and speaking with some of the other residents that live up there, um, was more or less, what, what does this all entail? How does, you know, questions of cause... what, what does this all entail, how does, you know, questions of cost, maintenance, all, all those things initially are the initial questions that are on it. So, um, probably just to start with, some of the concerns with the road right now currently is just, um, over, over the years, this has kind of progressed from, um, when I first had moved out there, uh, to the end to several residents, there's ten residents that live on this road, um, twelve if you count adjacent, two other adjacent properties that, that don't use Fifty-Ninth all the time, but they're right up to that road. Over the years, what's changed on it is additional residents, but also, um, traffic on that, we have, you know, several families that live out there, and the amount of traffic on that road is quite a bit. So if it's, um, from Governor Galen's business that's out there, um, a lot of it comes down to just the way that life has changed, uh, trucks bringing out multiple times a day, um, couriers as far as like, I'm sure Amazon or whoever you want to fill the blank with that, um, bringing packages out multiple times a day, school buses, so the road does see quite a bit of traffic on it, and it's a short distance from the pavement. I'm sure the county has experienced, um, you know, some level of, of maintenance that's been on that with blading and, and trying to take care of it too, because the road does get beat up pretty, pretty good, pretty fast. So there's washboards in it constantly, um, and then dust is one of the other concerns, which in the past, what we have done as residents, we've, we've paved and we had, um, crushed asphalt, put out the road out of our own pockets, paved what we had to put on there. Uh, it's broken down, it's been bladed multiple times, and essentially it's pretty much gone at this point. So it's back down to, um, you know, the road being part of vehicles and everyone else, just because of the amount of traffic that's on it. So paving it would alleviate some of that, hopefully as an issue. And then, um, for us as residents, I would look out there, how would the cost still, I'm going to ask a question back to you, this, is it a special assessment, is it a tax, is it, uh, you know, what would that cost be, is there an estimate that would be on that? Would the estimated cost versus actual cost, is, how would that change? So I think there's a lot of questions on, on, upon all those things, and right now this is, um, more or less just trying to figure out all those things.
Well, to start with, I had, number one, Rachel can help me on some of this, but, uh, I had, had her look up, we don't have easements on all of the property on that, all the way out there, correct? And then that was one of them. The other thing, I did drive out to Galen's a couple days ago, and I just briefly, I didn't go all the way to the south end, but I, I looked at the road and then, and I'm just looking at it from that point, standpoint, just from his corner, down to the stop sign or whatever, the yield sign or whatever it was, there's a lot of dirt work that's gonna end up going into that to make it a county road, that.
Not wide enough.
You know, and then you end up with, I don't know where the utilities are, you know, things that, no, those are all the questions that, that for price wise, you'd have to talk to Tom would be the one, like, Tom Michael was, was more engineering, are the ones that would provide us with what, you know, some type of estimate of what it's gonna cost.
And that, and that's what you're looking for. We, we'd have, we'd have to do that, we'd have to get, um, our engineer get what the cost would be. And I haven't driven the road, but it would, if we're, if we were to pave it, we would have to bring it, the entire thing up to county, what we have in our ordinance is county specs.
Sure.
Which according to what I'm hearing, um, Rick say, is there be, um, some great work that have to be done?
Some of this was looked at in the past because the road was widened out initially from where it was, there was, when the county shop changed its access point from across the tracks to that hill, that dirt was actually brought out and down, down the side. So I know there was initially probably some easements that were gained for, for doing that, maybe some likes have changed.
You know, just from, like, from your corner, Joe, looking south, I really look, I mean, just looking at it, I, Tom is like, you know, more of the, the experts on this, but that road looks, from that direction, looks pretty passable as far as ditches and road.
Yeah, they widened that road, that's where they widened.
From that corner north.
Basically that part of it.
Literally the bank is higher than the road on the, on the east side, you know, the fence and the right away and everything are right up, I don't know where all, we'd have to do a lot of research and see where all that's at.
I know you guys want like Fifty-Ninth Avenue, but then Speaker Myers and Galen and them, they come off of it, do they, are you guys wanting that as well, or just the Fifty-Ninth Avenue because?
Just Fifty-Ninth.
So they would be okay with then turning on to their own gravel?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, that's. Your question, Rick, I guess, on the easement part, because I had just surveyed mine, and he measured back thirty-five feet, so the fence is from the center thirty-three feet back on the east side, I don't know on the west side, how.
But are these recorded easements, Rick, or?
Some weren't, some weren't, I had that, Rachel, I, I, I have it in my phone, but I didn't, we, we had, she printed it out for us, but we had in easements on portions of that, but not all, is that correct?
Yeah, she said it was like the north half of the actual county road, she didn't find anything to be digging on.
Okay, that's where we're at, we would end up, I mean, there's, there's a lot more legwork. And the other thing that, I'm just in conversation with, we had a meeting at the shop here, um, Monday, and Tom brought up a, a process that's new, that's something I think a guy would want to, really would, we're looking at it, they're using it other places, but if I'm saying it wrong, Tom, but they mill the road down to about ten inches and they, they use a product to stabilize the road, and then they can actually put the chip, double chip seal on top of that, and its cost is way less. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So that's something I wa, I would strongly weigh a little bit and look, it'd save you a lot of money in the future.
So how is that, what you're talking about, is that something that turns to powder, just like that crushed asphalt, or is that?
I'm gonna let him explain a little bit better.
So yeah, Fifty-Ninth Avenue, um, is a local road, I believe it's on the section line here. So on the section lines, we would want seventy-five feet of right away on each side, so that would be, if it's currently thirty-three, thirty-five, it, to meet our current roadway design standards, it'd be seventy-five feet is what they'd like to see, um, on there. But yeah, looking at some other options, um, if there's a pretty narrow section of roadway, that's maybe only twenty-two or twenty-four right now, and we need to add five inches of asphalt, we can get really skinny. So some other options we're looking at is essentially coring that existing gravel road, seeing what's there for a dip, and can that get treated to be, um, the same strength as asphalt right now? And then we just put kind of a surfacing layer on it to make it essentially two inches of asphalt or a double chip seal or something, so. Eliminates all the dust, um, keeps our width the same, so we're not building up so high and requiring all that dirt work. So that's, that's the option, um, Rick brought up.
So how would that hold up as far as for weight wise?
Right, so it's designed to be the same as what we would have for our, all our county roads, essentially. I guess the numbers look great, it's not necessarily tested all that much in this area, there's other counties testing with it, but it's similar to if you've heard of like cement stabilized base, it'd be the same thing, it just.
So if you're, if you're asking the county to look at paving it, we would have to have the engineer go out there and do the work to find out what the cost would be.
Is that what a special assessment happens to us?
And we would determine that at, we, we could determine that at that whatever point. Where I'm getting at is, the engineers are gonna do that for nothing. So those costs would have to be covered, just to find out what it would cost to have this done. And, um, I would need a little bit of help as to determining what we would do with those costs, because my understanding is that's the question you're asking, is what would this cost to have it paved?
Correct, and, you know, if there's other options that you guys deem as, as maybe a better option, you know, I, I guess you're open to that, it's, it's, the ma, the major concern is it's just that is the amount of traffic that's on that road, and once again, it's progressed over time, there's a, there's a lot of tax revenue on that road for the, that probably pays for a good chunk of the county with other stuff. We're not saying that is it deserving to be a, a special attention on there, but there is a lot of tax revenue off that road, and the amount of traffic on it is, it would be nice to not have a vehicle that beat the snot every time you go up and down the road, and I get it from the blade operator's standpoint, is that he can't spend every day on that road either, but it's just the amount of traffic and that, that comes up and down it, and it's not a big portion of the road, it's, I mean, you can see the county shop from it, I mean, it's, it's close and, you know, one could argue that there's, you know, lots of other areas in the, the county that need attention as well, and, and I don't dismiss those, it's more of a, it, it's a, it's a small amount of road for the amount of traffic that's on it and the tax revenue, and it seems like, it seems like they could do better on it, I mean, for what's there, for the small amounts of road that's there.
Well, one thing I can say, and I, I, for the five of us up here, it's like, I can understand your concerns and feel about it, but you have no idea how many times we hear that same, same story.
And I do totally understand.
And, and the price of what everything costs, you know, and it's like, you know.
That's why we're saying maybe not without, you know, we, we're not dismissing that there might not be some cost to it, but initially it'd be nice if, if you could use the county to do the assessment on it first and just say that, you know, we're willing to look at options on here to improve this, this is what you would be up against if you wanted to increase that. I mean, to me that, and probably all the residents out there would go a long way just to say that we're, you know, we are looking into this, and I, I think Rachel and our ass of county has probably heard from us, and trying to, we try to be as patient as possible on there, but that road does get beat up really bad sometimes.
I mean, there's, there's several, but I, I mean, I, I mean, I look at it across the county, there's a lot of them in that situation. And we, you know, and I do know for, you know, like, for Tom to look at it, assess it, and see what it's gonna do, what it's gonna cost, that would be the first step, you know, but it's like, number one is like, to me is just to go out there, regrade it and pave it, it's gonna cost over a million dollars, time you get everything together with, with all, uh, once you put all that together, I would, like you said, be impatient, and maybe we can see a better option. This is fairly new, isn't it, Tom, the, the other project that you work on?
Yeah, correct, I'll pull that directly, yeah, there's not a lot of, um, sections to look at right now.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I would, I'd strongly urge you to, I mean, it would save a lot of money in the, in the, in the long run too.
And I don't think paving was the only option, it's more or less to get rid of some of the, the other concerns with it, with, you know, the washboarding and the dust and the, you know, just the, the road getting beat up this last year, and the county did have to come out, there was a soft spot up in that hill that's on there. Um, it's also a concern, obviously you see that the, the ditches are higher than the road itself, and you can imagine what it gets to be like in the middle of winter time. Myself, as long as, and many of the other residents have, um, blown that road up to all the way down, and we understand it's not a, a primary road, and we need to get down to twenty, and we all have jobs that we have to get to. I've snowballed that road all the way to work before, so my wife can get to work, or myself, so, and I'm not the only one that's done that, I know many have done that to try to reduce the load on the county, because we understand that, and I think everyone out there is very reasonable that's on there, I think we're just looking for a reasonable option to make this road better than it, what it is right now, because I think if you spent any time on it, you'd understand what we're talking about.
Coming right off twenty is pretty bad, I mean, you, you pull off a twenty there and you ding your sideways by the time you get around the corner.
The curve is really bad too, um, the amount of traffic on that back road, I, I'm not sure if you guys know how much is on it of that back road, there's not pretty much any given time that you can go down that road and there isn't somebody on that road, the, the County Twenty back road. Um, our road has a lot of traffic on it as well, but County Twenty has a lot of.
And you're, you're correct, and there's our conversation yesterday, on Monday too, was like that. That's one of the things, like, if this process would work, that's something personally I'd like to see is from Golden Valley to Hazen, is that County Twenty is, you know, if we could do it increments and, and reshape, you know, it's been reshaped, but cover that road, because County Twenty is one of our major thoroughfares on the southern side of the county, all the way from one end to the other, and you're right, and there is a lot of traffic from, you know, all those roads back there.
But that kind of goes back to when I, you guys were here when we talked about the bid letting for another blade. I think we have a lot of specifics that need to be worked out for some of these roads to justify to our taxpayers to get another blade, so that we don't have this, because we have many roads across this county that are in the shape your guys is, I've driven your road, I, I drive gravel every day, and they're just a lot of work, they can't be everywhere at all times, but we gotta find a way to do something better to make these roads stand up.
And I think that's what it is, it's like you said, I mean, the, the blades will come out and they'll blade the road, and the bad thing is, is that in a day or two, it's already beat back out of course, you know, as bad as it was, and that's, and I understand you spend a lot of time cutting out washboards, and I know why they don't want to cut them down all the way, because you have to replace moldboard on them, and, and I don't know whose job that is, if it's, if, if it kind of falls on the county or the maintenance of the equipment, but all those things are factors and costs that come into play, if you can eliminate or reduce at least that by putting, you know, this process of road, something different. And that's what we're looking for, is, we understand you can't be out there every day, and you shouldn't be out there every day, um.
We need to do something that holds up more than one day.
Yes.
I mean, that's, and you're right, I mean, that, I hear that complaint across the county, I mean, we got things that we need, certain areas. I mean, I'm not saying, but I know, uh, we, we're looking at ways to change and get better, and that, that's some of the things that we're, you know, like I had the conversation with Mark this morning too, and it's like, how we can be more efficient, how we can be better, and, I mean, we're just.
And I'm not saying it's an operator's fault, it's not anything, it goes into every realm of this.
Yeah, it's more than one factor that's, that's coming to play here.
It's, you know, crowns on roads and getting, you know, just, it's just a ongoing process that we, we have a long ways to go to get better.
Well, do we want, uh, Tom to look into?
Well, I was gonna ask, Randy, how many miles are you talking here from that bridge to where you want to?
So from the bridge to the corner where, um, Fifty-Ninth tees into County Twenty, that is point four miles according to mapping what I've seen. And then from that intersection to the end of the dead end road on Fifty-Ninth or Dead Ends is point nine miles.
So tie one point, one point three.
So one point three miles total.
And, and I personally would look at those as two separate projects, you know, to when you, on these maps, it actually lists as Fifty-Eighth Avenue. That gets a lot of county public traffic, and then from Fifty-Ninth going south, that would be more of a special assessment.
Yeah.
Twenty, the portion of twenty would be on our guy in there.
Awesome, so that would give you some, kind of some feel for that, about third by the county and two-thirds by you guys?
Yeah.
Section of road there.
Possibly.
Possibly.
So I guess initially what we would be asking for then is if you could just look at it, and obviously it doesn't sound like this is a unique problem, but if you could look at maybe ours as a, a starter, and if nothing else, as a pilot pro, program that you could use in our ass of county. I'm telling you, we have a lot of traffic, you could quickly find out if it's gonna work or not. It wouldn't be a waste of money on, on Everwells and County, maybe it's a good pilot project, is that portion of road on Twenty or our road to see if this process is gonna work.
My, my question though, based on that, that, that mileage is, you know, what would a special, a district, district, assessment district bear? I mean, how much is too much? I mean, you get down to, let's say it's that point nine miles comes back and you get a million and a half dollars into it, spread over ten residents, maybe twelve. Are you, are?
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, special, the special says every single one a hundred, a hundred and thirty grand, you're, I'm guessing you're probably not gonna have a consensus on that?
You're talking five thousand dollars approximately a year for twenty years, that's probably not happening. Pretty much with it, you could.
Pretty fast.
Just do quick math on it, I'm sure that's what it, on there, there'd be probably like pretty much a note, because, you know, you think about the tax already that, that the residents are paying is pretty high already on, on, on stuff, and we know why all the stuff that's up there, but, um,
I'm just saying.
I'd agree in saying that that's probably not, but, you know, I think what the next question would be, what other options is there? If it's, if it's this option, is there something else the county has tried that, that has worked? Because I would think that there's gotta be some net benefits to the county as well, of reducing the amount of, you know, labor has go either on Twenty or on ours, and, and increase safety, I mean, you've, like, once again, you have a lot of residents on that, on that road, that's a short distance, and it's a thoroughfare into Buell from the south end. So there's not only truck traffic from, you know, this time it's super busy, but, um, and in the spring, but throughout the year, there is a lot of families that live south of, of Buell Hazen that utilize that road.
I got a question for Tom though, could help me on this a little bit. On, like you said, on other options, to me, I'm just thinking about it, it's like, um, if we get a good crown on the road and get the road shaped the way we want it, what happens if you, if we put a may chlorate or something like that on that road? If we get a good crown on the road and get the road shaped the way we want it, what happens if you, if we put a mid chlorate or something like that on that road? Cost wise, it's a heck of a lot cheaper. How does that stand up?
Right. I believe that's an annual application you would put on there.
Mid chlorate's an annual application.
I believe so, yeah.
I mean, as long as you got it shaped for, I understand the road's gonna be shedding water. You're gonna have potholes and that kinda thing too.
Right. Yeah, it's a little steeper than a pavement, usually like a three percent crown is what you'd wanna see. And yeah, county road twenty would be on system. We don't have any projects programmed in the next five years for that. And then fifty ninth, we would treat as a local road. So none of those local roads are really programmed in the next five years. All, all the budget goes towards the on system county roads. So any of those local roads are really only improved as, as the commission, you know, approves those to be, or else. Yeah, that special assessment district where they would establish that district boundary, get sixty percent of the landowners to petition for the road to be improved.
And we currently have a request already for another. Piece of property, uh, road in the county that some people want us to develop.
Right.
Or improve, not develop, improve.
And I could see where this is.
So we gotta keep that in mind too when you're looking at this portion.
Right. That's what some of this, this pilot project thing, that's with visiting with Tom on this, may or may not happen, but that was some of the things that people are looking at.
What kinda cost are you looking at with that pilot project?
I have no idea. That's something even.
Um, it was around five hundred thousand a mile is where we're at, rather than closer to a million with dirt work and everything on it. So if there's some dirt work, there's a significant savings by, you know, keeping that roadway the same width. But yeah, in, in this case, with the special assessment district and there not being kind of a unified group or subdivision, um, to work with it. This would probably be more of a county-led, um, engineering design and construction, rather than putting all the cost on like the HOA cabin site where there is an existing group to, to kinda work with, so.
So what would be the estimate for you to go out there and, and provide us with an estimate on the, on the project?
Right. So we'd probably be around ten to twenty thousand to look into, um, this and a thorough review, figure out what, what does it right away do with a couple of corners and, and come up with a plan. Not get designs put together, but essentially look at it and get everything to the point where we could start designing it, yeah.
What road, you said there's some of the system really on this on the road?
Oh, yeah. Ward County section, um, east of town to their county shop. They did a, a quarter mile section of that. It's been around the country though. They just constructed that this year. It's real similar to what some of the state was.
It's kinda like to a, to a, like a bear total before you spend one hundred on, on something, cause otherwise you just.
We're just thinking like, I'm not, don't know if I'm ready to offer to say for the county to spend ten or, ten or twenty thousand dollars today on that. I would like to take more, do a little more legwork and research and see what, you know, what our options are and what we can do, rather than jump from the frying pan to the fire right at this moment, you know?
I do think we need to reach out to some of like the oil bearing counties and what have they done with their roads for improvement, cause we're not the only ones. I think we have other options to.
See what we can look around and see. You know, we got a commission, uh, next, what, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, we're gonna see all these guys from the, you know, up west. They're gonna be down here in Bismarck and we, maybe we can ask a lot of questions and figure out some of these things. You're gonna see a lot of different people that we've maybe have answers that we could look for.
That'd be two weeks. Twenty seventh and nineteenth.
Twenty seventh and twenty eighth or something like, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, something like that. It's the last week of the month.
Okay, I'm wrong. Again.
So Randy, I think part of the, what I'm getting from Mark and Gene then is if you could take some of these numbers and go visit with your residents in that area and see what they'd be willing to bear. You know, we can roughly estimate that it's gonna be a million for paving. If that's not something they're interested in, I don't think we need to spend money, you know, designing that.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident in telling you that that's the.
Yeah. So then the, the probably one question that you'd need to ask is if we do a project, pilot project and do like a chip seal for five hundred thousand, is that something they'd be willing to consider?
Yeah, I think initially would be to, to, I think what I, I personally would understand before, you know, we do a bunch of legwork. Once again, we're dealing with not an HOA here, this is just a bunch of residents that use this road that are neighbors that are pretty close in proximity, but, um. You know, asking the question, I would kinda wanna know is, how is this holding up and is this road even in that category? If I take an initial look at it, I don't think you need to do ten to twenty grand worth of engineering work to at least say, you know, with some level of confidence, should it, should this even be a candidate?
Why don't we, uh, Rick and the road department look into this a little bit and come back?
I'll talk with Tom and see what we.
Yeah, see what we're at.
We'll get a plan together, what we wanna do.
See what we, what improvements we could do that the county could bear.
Cause at the end of the day, the road is a county road. It's not an HOA road. It's not, anyway, this is still a, a public road at the end of the day. So bearing that cost on, you know, all the people that are using it is, you know, it's still most likely, yes, is an improvement for all the people that utilize that probably. But it's not a personal drive, but it's not our property. It's public property.
So two things then. So yes, the county would do the maintenance as is with that, being it is on a section line. But to upgrade and improve that, then I don't know if that would happen. Um, if there was something that did develop, then in order to do a special assessment. You would have to form a homeowners association so that we'd have a way of working that.
Outside of the assessment and options, pilot program or whatever, while you're looking at it or paying some attention, it sounds like Rick might be the one that would need that. Can you look at it and just see what else can you do?
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's a conversation like, I would sit down with Tom and Elroy and, you know, we would, you know, what, what are the things that we can, what are our options, you know?
Yeah, maybe crowning it and doing some, some minor things that are within the county's ability without going this far. I mean, what, what else can we do just to get it better than that?
I can, I can.
Reduce the maintenance for the blades.
I can probably assure you that, you know, you can probably get a better road, but you're probably not gonna get rid of dust.
Well, yeah. And we've lived with that. I don't think that's a primary concern. Um, I'd say more of it's gonna be with the washboarding on the vehicles and, and it's, it's really an issue. But, um, also if it rains out, it gets pretty gnarly out there just because of, there is no crown on the road. You're right, it doesn't drain off and, not, and not the whole road, but portions of the road, you know, that have come off. So if you can look at some of those things that may alleviate those issues, um, dust would be, something would be good. But if we can reduce the, the, the need to delete it and some of those other issues, I don't know if there's things you can do on that hill to, to help out with the snow that's on there. We've dealt with this now for a long time already, but if there's anything you can think of when you're out there and look at it that would help with that, that would also be a nice to know too.
They filled in one spot last year, had some contractor, and I think it actually narrowed up in that spot, the road. They crowned it so bad that it, it seemed like it narrowed the road up. And I noticed that on county twenty when they did that last year, by them grain bins, they did the same thing there. It looked like it just narrowed it up some.
I think, you know, I, I, I would think you'd be surprised though if you pulled the tape though, cause.
Right, right.
Cause it does, it does look narrower from a, a optical point.
Yeah.
But I bet you if you pulled the tape from shoulder to shoulder, you would be surprised though.
Well, let's have, uh, the road department look at it and Rick can come back with a, to us with something and.
You know, visit with you guys and I'll, I will, you know, I'll get with Tom and, and Elroy and, you know, we can, I mean, he, he has time to think about it too and, you know, different options. And we can come up with something, ideas anyways. Not saying that we're, you know, we'll just figure, you know, see what we can do, where we're at. That's, just then throwing your hands up and saying no is not probably, I, I don't agree with that, but I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is today.
That's what all we're asking for is.
You know, I gotta, gotta, you know, do a little legwork and see, see what's out there, see what's, other things that have worked for other people, those type of things, you know? These guys are good at what they do and figuring out that stuff too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Randy.
Okay, thanks. We have to get right down to appraisal. Right, appraisal of unredeemed property, public hearing, notice of property sale. That was at county thirty. We're running a little late on that one. Well.
Or it's just a notice to be.
Usually public hearing.
This is just for you to approve the appraisal. This isn't an actual public hearing, Jean. And then she'll present it, we're gonna set it up.
All right. Where am I in my pile here?
Funding and zoning. Tax records in front of us.
So this is a zoning exemption for Perry Winkler to put in electrical service for an A well. Rough Rider, I think he essentially just needs it to put in electrical service, so.
I'd looked at this and then I'd mentioned to Jenny that, uh, the date is just wrong on that, so she edited that and I think that's acceptable as is.
Did I miss this or did we not do this at, at P and Z?
I don't think it needs to go through P and Z. When I looked at old cases, they're, it never went to P and Z, so they never even charged for applications. It just went to the commissioners and.
This is just to get.
I think Rough Rider just needs like approval for, just so he can get an electrical block, since it's for A purposes.
Are they?
There hasn't been a one since twenty sixteen.
Do they even cross a county?
We don't do them very often.
Nope. They don't cross county road or?
It's all in private.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve this application. You have a second?
Oh.
Rick?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Now you're gonna ask my questions, cause, okay. Any further discussion? Any nun, Casey?
Aight.
Rick?
Aight.
Jamie?
Aight.
Mark?
Aight.
Gene, I motion passed. That ends discussion. Okay. Which one do you wanna do next here? Either the ordinance rewrite or appraisal of unredeemed property? We do that one right away, appraisal of unredeemed property.
So yeah, you have the parcels in front of you with the minimum sale price. That'll get posted in the paper. Yep, I'll put it in the paper, but with that app. We need to set a date.
Oh, this one. Right here. Okay. I was going too far down. All right. Well, I gotta play really dumb here. What do we need to do here?
We need to approve them publishing the, their, uh.
Approve the appraisals, minimum sale price.
Which basically covers the delinquent taxes, sell the fees and any specials that are outstanding on the property.
And then set the public hearing to the November fifth, so that would be need two weeks to advertise it. So I gotta advertise you approve this and then advertise our, I'm looking at ten o'clock on November fifth. That's our next meeting after this. And then you'll have public hearings so people can come back and agree or disagree to talk to you if they have disagreed. Put it in writing.
Okay.
Like, is that, is November fifth enough time?
I'll second that.
I need two weeks to publish this approved dollars.
I'll second that.
Wait, who moved? Did you make?
Rick.
I made moves.
Rick made a motion, Casey seconded a motion.
We're gonna, appraisal of the unredeemed property, public hearing setting notice on the November fifth meeting. So the girls can get their work.
I think it'd be good twenty third and the thirtieth and then we'd have the meeting on the fifth.
That would be enough.
Yep. Any further discussion? Anywhere nun, Rick?
Aight.
Casey?
Aight.
Mark?
Aight.
Jamie?
Aight.
Gene I, motion passed. Are we at the ordinance rewrite extended contract? Do we, we still, okay.
You got the information yesterday, so I haven't even had time to look at any of it, so I don't.
They do have a copy of everything that you emailed.
Now what am I?
This one.
The big thick back.
It's this big brick.
We in the back.
I don't know if it's in the back. It should've been on the side.
It's got the big clip on it, yep. This hole, okay.
Yep.
Dan, I didn't have a comp extra.
I got some good commissioners. If it wouldn't be for them, I'd, they keep me, thank you.
Thinking about you.
Okay. What, where, where are we then?
Mark, uh, Kifer is here from, for the, and, uh, Jen are here for the ordinance rewrite extended contract. That's where you're at.
So last month you guys had asked for, uh, update as far as where we're at on everything. Um, this is that update as far as where we're at on the drafts. And where things are at as far as, um, what we're suggesting for proposed updates to your guys as planning and zoning. And there, there's, the one thing that I would say that's really missing in there that I think we need to have some conversations with the commissioners about is, um, some of the different opportunities for enforcing. And, um, how much inspections and things like that. Some of that's very closely tied to the budget that you guys are gonna set that's available for some of this. And that's one of the big things that I feel like throughout that package that, um, will need to be addressed yet. But I think this gives you a pretty good idea of the direction that we're heading. Um, a lot of this was looking at, um, both independently drafting a lot of ordinances. Um, looking at what some of the surrounding counties are doing and trying to, um, look at what some of the problems have been surrounding some of the other counties. In particular, I think at the last meeting it came up that there was a pretty large data center up in Williams County that had been providing some area, some of the area residents with some problems. And one of the novel things that we came up with, um, that I think makes a lot of sense is, as you're looking at industrial properties, particularly, um, noisy industrial properties. That maybe they need to post a bond for noise mitigation, so that if their acoustic studies don't come back as accurate as they want that, the residents of this county have some rights, some ability to mitigate some of those problems. And not everybody's throwing their hands up in the air, well, what do you want us to do? Trying to come up with some meaningful things, um, to provide some security for, um, the area residents. That like be located in near proximity to some of the industrial districts and things like that that could be coming. Um, cause it, it does seem like Mercer County is in a unique position that we probably haven't seen since the early eighties. Where, um, we could have quite a lot of industry coming to the county and we need to be able to, I'll say peacefully coexist and have some regulations that define that and how that looks. And so, um, that's kinda the mindset that we went at this with, with a lot of the different, uh, industry trying to balance that. You'll, you'll also notice that we started for a discussion point. We included some costs and things like that for different permits. Um, most of those costs were random costs that we put in there, but more discussion points that surrounding counties are looking at doing, um, for some of these major projects and things of that nature. And I think that that needs to be part of the discussion point in terms of when you look at, when it comes time to enforcement and when it comes time to, um, inspections and things like that. What's an appropriate permit cost, knowing that the county's gonna bear some of those costs as far as from an inspection standpoint, enforcement to make sure people are complying with their ordinance is. So you want fees and things like that to be high enough. And, um, so there's a lot of information like that. We sent these out in each chapter as its own separate PDF. We're still working on, um, blending these together as one consistent ordinance, um, so that it's a readily searchable ordinance, so that it's as. so that it's a readily searchable ordinance, so that it's as user-friendly as we can make it. But I think that this gives you guys a pretty good idea as to where we're at and the process and what kind of our vision is so that you guys can provide us some concrete feedback as to what you guys might like. The other thing that I think might be worth having some conversation about is what your guys' opinions might be with respect to some, like, I'm gonna say it, recreational residential districts like out at the lake, if you wanna try to make some adjustments on something like that. That's not currently in your guys' ordinances, but that might be something from a tax revenue standpoint that deserves taking a little bit closer look at. Does it make sense to permit some smaller lots to be developed and sold out at the lake, knowing that it could significantly boost some of the tax revenue and things like that versus some of the mobile home lots and things like that that are out there? You get a mobile home lot that you can get, say, between a thousand and three thousand dollars a year versus a lot that could be sold for a hundred and fifty to two hundred, maybe even three hundred thousand, as far as how that might impact some of the county's finances. I think those are all relevant questions to have, that I think we would like to have some of those discussions with you guys. Ask you, is that a direction that you guys would like to see us go? Or do you wanna stay true to this, to having larger acreages for residential, rural residential properties? I think those are all good questions as for the direction that you guys wanna see the county head. The other thing that we did throw in there kind of at the last minute was some guidelines for, the potential for man camps and worker-type housing with some of the industry that's coming, that's potentially coming to the area. I think that that's a very real possibility that we may have to have, or we may have a very severe housing shortage and things of that nature, that we wanna be on the front end of that and try to address that versus being caught on our back foot trying to address that. And so you'll also see that there's some ordinances and some regulations that we threw in there. We looked at both Stark County and McKenzie County, that counties that have really dealt with severe housing shortages so that we could kinda get an idea as to how did they look to address some of those types of problems and try to do it so that we can maintain some, as much of the peace and coexistence within the county as what we currently do with some of that direction. So that's, that's really what, where we're at right now with this. And we, once you guys have a chance to look at this, we would really welcome a lot of feedback from you guys. I appreciated the comments and the critiques last time that we were there and wanted to get you guys this information, and I appreciate you guys' patience getting to that point. And then going back to some of my previous conversations that we had at the last meeting is, what this addition, this updated agreement allows for us to do is to make sure that the comprehensive land use plan and the ordinances that there, I'll say, I use that analogy of hand and glove fit, to make sure that what we're putting together for the ordinances fits exactly with what you guys are intending with the land use program. We have not started doing any drafting as far as land use or anything like that. And I think that that is an important component. In the research that we have done, most counties, and I'm not saying we did anything wrong, we just did it different than other counties. Most counties have tackled the land use issues first and then rewrote the ordinances. And in this instance, we started tackling the ordinances first. And it might make sense to try to pass all of that together to make sure that they, they really work well together the way that they're intended to work.
I guess I'll just kinda make a few comments on behalf of the commission. But part of my request last month was to get this a couple of weeks ahead of time so we could review it and go over what's all in there. So I think we're still at that point. We'd like some time to review this and go over that.
Yep.
So if you guys, for this time, while we're looking over what work you've done, could just continue cleaning up some of this and making some of those changes with what we originally had for a contract with you.
Absolutely.
I think that would be a place we could go forward with for the next couple of weeks.
Yes. And of course, I know a lot of your questions, the only way I have an answer for it is we would like your recommendation as to how to word certain ordinances.
Sure.
Because that's what we're, in a way, that's what we're asking, and it is, like, on some of the stuff you have. You, you have questions, but you also have, does this need to be added as a permitted item? Does it? I don't know, that, that's...
And that's where we wanted to include some of those comments, so that you guys could see some of the internal dialogue that we're having. We would like to, we're at that stage now where I think that we're really ready to start having some good conversations with planning and zoning and with you guys as far as, hey, this is, this is kind of the crossroads that we're at. Which direction would you like us to start taking some of these things? To make sure that when we have a finished product, it's a finished product that works for planning and zoning, it works for Jen, and it works for the commissioners there.
One of the things I see is like, you know, from personally, my thing that we have, the enforcement issue you brought up. The other thing is, is our bonds haven't changed, you know, we have the, maybe that's a P and Z meeting thing, but somewhere along the line, we're, our bonds have, need to reflect what's going on here too, where we're not, you know...
I agree with you.
We're not anywhere near, I mean, my example is the sand mine, we, one sitting out here, we get forty thousand dollars, I think, and that's not gonna, not gonna cut it to do any reclamation work, you know?
And I would agree with you on that. I think that the bonds need to be set as a, rather than a fixed dollar amount. I think that it needs to be a percentage of the total cost of the project or something along those lines. So it scales with the size of a project that's being done. If you're doing a fifty million dollar data center, or if you're doing a five million dollar sand mining operation, whatever that is, the bonds need to scale with the size of the project and the potential damage. And so I think that the best way to do that is to say that that needs to be a percentage of the overall cost of the project that they need to post a bond with to provide that level of protection. I agree with you, like...
And I, and I think, you know, going with that is like what Gina said, that, that's what I want you guys to come up with, just like what you did right there. This is how I see it should fit, you know? This is what needs to be, this is what we recommend that needs to be done to put in there. I, that's, that's how I like to see it.
And that's something that we can, I think, we, that, those are some of the things that we would like to visit with both you guys in planning and zoning about as far as what makes sense for us for a bond amount might not track with you guys. And so I think that's some of the collaboration that we're at right now, is to talk through some of that and say, hey, where do you want some of these bonds to be in terms of a percentage of the cost of the project? Because this is our opportunity to, I'll say unify that, treat it fairly across the board for everybody and have it so that it's scalable for the different sizes of projects and things of that nature.
You know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel on that though. I mean, there's a pretty well-known process for doing that based on, you know, what's, the amount of disturbance that's being done, what it costs to put it back together, and you post, you have posted charity bond to cover the scope of that. So I mean, I don't think we need to get into the weeds too much of trying to define, you know, a set dollar amount for this, that. I mean, each year, you know, that bond, those bonds can be updated based on the, the size and scope of what's, what's, what's disturbed and everything. I mean, I think, you talked about an enforcement process, I think there's also just a going through and a, and a look back process that needs to be done so that things are stayed up to date. And so, you know, um... Yeah, I, I guess from that standpoint, like, maybe kinda look at it from that standpoint. So it's uniform across the board, so everybody that comes in and, and you're not just picking and choosing a dollar amount out of the air every time, you know?
But I think it's like you said, it's like a, some type of, something that fits. But I mean, we haven't, right now, we don't have anything like that at all, you know?
All right, now we're two thousand dollar bonds.
Percentage of the project?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
The percentage of the project? Bond for the, percentage of the project, that'd be, to me, that's pretty fair.
That's a, that's a...
Good starting point.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta have these conversations. I don't know if we do that for P and Z.
I personally would like to see like a joint, all P and Z, all five of us commissioners, a public meeting at City Hall, so... Because ultimately, P and Z can decide one thing, but if we disagree with that as a board of five, it doesn't really matter what P and Z says, so it'd be nice to...
Well, really, P and Z's role is to, is to, is to be the, the vetting process. Whatever we decide is, is the, is gonna be the ordinance for the county. They do the initial vetting of does this fit with our, with this, with our ordinance. And, you know, we need to have that, we need to have them a very clear...
I agree with you there. I think that that's something that needs to happen. I think that up until this point, it was probably a little bit premature because we hadn't gotten documents to you guys. But now I think you guys both, we need to make sure that planning and zoning, and you guys have an opportunity to really take a good hard look at this and then set some kind of a, and, and maybe what makes sense is to say, okay, planning and zoning, what are your concerns? Commissioners, what are your concerns? Report that back and say, okay, now let's get together and hash out some of these concerns where there's overlap. Bring up some kind of a report back to you guys as to say, hey, this is what planning and zoning is reporting that they've got concerns with, this is what you guys are identifying as concerns. And now let's have, let's sit down and talk through this as kind of an open meeting.
That's why I'd like it as a joint, it'd save a lot of time and effort, I think.
Well, not only the boards, you know, because I sit on both the P and Z and the commission. But the public should have some input. But ultimately, our land use department is the one that deals with this every day. So I think no matter what our opinion is on the boards or even with public input, it's all valued. But ultimately, it's up to the people that deal with it every day to get their blessing.
If I may, did you guys set aside any budgeting for next year for code enforcement and inspections or anything like that? Was that at all part of your guys' budget for twenty twenty-six? I guess I wasn't following that.
I don't think we actually set anything aside, but we would, we, if we got to that point, we would have enough, probably in our reserve to make that work, but, but we didn't specifically.
I was kinda hoping maybe the money would just carry over the following year that's been set aside the last couple of years to pay for that.
I think that's a good point. The other thing that, with that, is that could maybe also influence some of the cost of the permits and things like that is, I think that there's a certain level where you want some of that to be kind of self-sufficient, where the cost of the permits is offsetting some of the costs of the inspections and the enforcement and things like that. And so I think that that's also a component to this.
Yes.
Isn't it hard to set a budget for when you don't really know what's...
And that's, that's fair. Yep.
Yeah. It would've been, I guess we could've made a guess at a dollar amount and budgeted it, but we, you know, that, that's not being real responsible either.
That's fair.
No, to me, to me, you know, I think all that fits in, but we kinda have to find the rules first, don't we?
Ten o'clock is an actual public hearing, so we gotta...
Okay.
That, that is an actual real public hearing.
Okay.
Not setting it. Pause, please.
It should be short because we don't have any public here on the Bayview Heights.
So the Bayview Heights special assessment, notice of public hearing, we still gotta...
We'll make a motion to close the regular meeting and open the special meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Okay. Notice of public hearing for the Bayview Heights.
And I gave you what was put in the paper, which, yes, I had plenty of years wrong. But, um, I did not get anything in writing, and also this notice was sent out to every one of those landowners. We emailed it to him, along with publishing it, and that he isn't here.
Any... Discussion, they're gonna get assessed thirteen, five, ninety-three, twenty-five each.
Per lot.
Right.
Per lot.
Yeah.
You don't want some be too much opposition to it. Okay? Otto, I'm, I'm, I'm almost at a loss. Do we, we don't need, do we need a motion to approve it, or? None really, because this is a public hearing, so there's no...
It was for the public to come in and they needed to talk to you.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
G and I, motion passed. Okay, do we need any, even a motion to...
That's what I did, I'm gonna, I'll move to per the regu, or open the regular meeting.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second it.
Oh my word, I can't even get all these initials down anymore. Jamie, Casey. Hey, Jamie, how do you?
Hi.
Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie and I. Okay, now we're back in session. Do we need any?
We're good.
Should I ask, try and ask you a question for the third time? Do we need a motion on this at all?
No.
Not really, do we?
Nope.
No, everything's been approved, it was just for the public to comment.
Okay.
Have the time to comment.
So much for the Bayview Heights public hearing, then. And now we're gonna recess for five minutes.
Are they, are we...
Ten o'clock, these two?
We're gonna have to recess pretty quick, soon. The old man needs a recess here.
It was a sneak, sneak me to come to me.
She wants to come back, I think it, I know, okay, come back in five.
Because you're a genuine firm, we can't put money...
I was gonna say, we're just on a separate account, but that reserve fund will be put in there, right?
That we budget a minimum, so they have to...
Well, exactly.
I, that's what I was gonna say when you said, I was hoping...
For the enforcement thing?
No, just when you said you were hoping that your money for the road, or...
No, I mean, like, down the road with the, um, like, we've been budgeting for this rewrite for like the last two years now, so then like, it's saying twenty-seven, we would just keep that money in my budget for an enforcement co-op person, is what I meant.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, like, don't take it back out of my budget, like, just leave it in my budget forever, so we would have that money. No, that's not what I meant, yeah.
No, no.
No, that's not what I meant.
The road permit, it does though, it's used up there, but...
Because they're a different company. Yeah. No, I might like just always keep that in my budget now, since it's been in there the last two years.
Is there like a line item in the current book or current budget?
She can just keep it just in there.
It's just one line item for planning and zoning, that's the salary, that's...
Basically, all you've done is just opt it to include these new updates, which is...
Everything, so it's not a separate line item.
So are you thinking in the future, like twenty-seven, if you would like a separate line item for like code enforcement?
Yeah, I suppose like if they would hire somebody for it, or contract, somebody for it, however, we're gonna do it, I mean, that's...
And like Mark said, I think a lot of that would, I mean, I, I don't really want to up the budget for it, but a lot of that will also be generated by permits and fees and stuff, so...
See, so it'd almost have to be like a separate thing, so we could track how much money that we're bringing in. Kinda like, the sheriff does the transportation officer? Yeah. That's separate and it funds itself. And we could do that with a permit guy. Yes. You know, and right now, I bring in like, how much do I bring in with my temporary uses, you know? I think I bring in fifteen thousand or whatever, and you're just with that stuff, so...
The other thing that I think you guys should look at is reaching joint powers agreements with the other cities so that there is a code enforcement person, that's maybe the same person that does it for Mercer County, that does it for Zap, that does it for Bula, that does it for Hazen, and have joint powers agreements. So maybe the county's responsible, and I'm just making up numbers for an example, maybe the county's responsible for fifty percent of that person's salary. Maybe Bula's responsible for twenty-five percent of that salary. Maybe Hazen's responsible for fifteen percent, and so on and so forth, where you guys reach some kind of a joint powers agreement to say, hey, we all recognize that enforcement and inspections, that that's a really important thing.
I will say on that, that one thing I know is Hazen and Bula at least have very different inspection processes.
um, inspection processes. I know like when Hazen was looking at adjusting how they do inspections, I looked at what Bula did, and they have no interest in doing that.
And Bula contracts with like company, I think, for an inspector.
On Bula.
Once you got closer to that point, I was gonna.
Bula's influence, there's certain, there's certain things that Bula requires.
Bula's.
I don't know how precise they are, what they require inspections for, which the Haysen City Commission has said, we don't want to require inspections for those things. So, if you did do that kind of thing, you might have, there might have to be some negotiation.
Yeah.
Discussion, cause there's pretty different code processes in the cities.
But couldn't you have still an inspector and he, 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 she, we use the word he,
Yep.
um, that could still do it and based on Bula's ordinances, Hazen's ordinances, the county, or you know, they would have to make it be a little bit of a process one to make sure that they'd look into that.
The right process.
Yeah.
Cause I do think, especially with as much as going on with the county, I think you guys are gonna wanna have somebody, cause it's, the sense that I'm getting, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but the sense that I'm getting is these next five to ten years are gonna be pretty transformative for Mercer County. Um, and trying to get ahead of that, I think is gonna be important.
Oh, I don't disagree with that, it's, we gotta get, and that, that's what we're asking, we would get these ordinances so that we can enforce them, and the enforcement process is another step in it. How we enforce it and how we impose a penalty and what the penalties are going to be.
Is that period?
Yeah.
Did we edit the date?
What was wrong with the date?
He filmed out his application.
Oh, that was the date he signed it.
Okay, yep. So then that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I've never done one of those since I've been here, and I pulled out old cases and I just went off that and. I mean, rough riders. But then they let people build new houses and they put in electrical boxes and that's just fine, but they won't let them get an electrical box as well.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, great.
Them guys north of hell will get everything.
I'm around the county and there's a new build, I'm like, I don't know what's planning and zoning, how they put up there, how they even get sewer.
I think I could, maybe I have telepathy, but I think I could tell you what Jean's comments.
Were you asking?
What's her saying? Electrical service on A, that you said, I mean, you have a doctor's gonna hold on that thing.
Well, I know the permits and ordinance thing, I can go way back to real basic. You know, when my mom, she said, well, I'm not gonna go have to go to the county if I wanna build a chicken barn. Well, I get that, but at what point do we tell someone?
Where do you draw the line?
You have first, still trying to.
Just cause. You're, you're an egg out there, you wanna build a chicken barn, well, now all of a sudden, you've got.
I heard Tyler.
The Joe shoe area where everyone's putting on their chicken.
We'll get there.
And they're complaining because their neighbors.
If anyone on, it's another problem, so.
Everything is learning, I'm telling you.
A chicken barn that you have twenty hens that are laying eggs to a turkey barn that has two hundred, two thousand turkeys in it, it'd be a bet. Where do you draw that line? So you have to say everything.
Okay, well, my, all the commissioners are back, we'll reconvene. Okay. Back to our ordinance rewrite. Oh. Now I can have more coffee. That doesn't need to be in the minutes.
Throw page here.
Commission needs more coffee. Oh, hey, any, any, anything else? I think, I think we.
It's not a fair question, but Jen, where, I mean, like you said, you haven't really looked at it yet, but where do you, where do you think, or where are you, where are you at with any of this?
Yeah, I haven't even opened it yet, so. I'll have the planning and zoning meeting in November probably, and then that'll give everybody time to review it and.
I understand, but, and what is our scheduled date for P and Z?
Remember that third November is?
So, I would like us.
No, at the, that third Thursday.
No, third Thursday, thirteenth, no, twentieth.
Twenty, November twenty.
That's your next planning and zoning.
That's the next third Thursday. Unless you guys wanna.
Is it one?
Cause it would be tomorrow.
Tomorrow would be the.
I mean.
Yeah, we're not re- reviewing tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that the commission should look at it after the P and Z has looked at it, right?
I don't.
I mean, I'm truly having that for.
Right.
Well, you guys just wanna redo the contract, that's what you guys, I mean, you're not really proving the ordinance or anything.
Well, I was just reading, I mean, I'm just looking it through, it's some of the changes, there were some of the additions, it was commented on, you know, and stuff, it's like, some of the things that, maybe that's what P and Z and Mark or, uh, Jen- Jennifer or somebody there.
Sounds like a question to.
With these comments is like, how would you, how would you recommend?
We do.
How do you, how do you fix that? What do you, what would you do, you know?
We can.
Something should be added, something should be deleted, how should the wording be, you know, those, where do you guys even identify the spot? How do we fix them then?
Land use. You know, I, you know, I, if you're asking for to extend the contract, I mean, I think I'd like to fulfill what we got in front of us first, right? And I think this is still within the original scope of what we contracted.
This is still within the original scope of the contract. I don't want.
The dates.
What I would like to see happen is that the land use and the ordinances are passed at the same time, so that we don't pass the ordinances and then go back to the land use and say, and have that confine us too much, and then have to go back and either amend the ordinances to fit the land use or to have to amend um, the land use, and so if we could have those be passed at the same time, I think that that makes more sense as far as being in a position where you're not putting yourself into a box or prematurely passing anything, um, and I think that's kind of the the situation that we're a little bit concerned about by saying, hey, we're ready to pass these ordinances right now, but we haven't looked at the land use and looked at what potential problems there may be with that.
And I'm, I'm not quite following there why those two are tied together, um, because you're gonna have an ordinance no matter what your land use is gonna be, right? Your land use is, these are comprehensive plan, but your ordinances are your rules that fall within that, and right now, you know, I, I, I see those two, they're, they're, they're not mutually exclusive, or I mean, they're mutually exclusive, those two, and so.
I would say that they're, they, they both stand on their own, but they're very closely related to each other.
I, I'm not disagreeing with that, but what I'm saying is the ordinances don't define sections of land or anything, it defines the rules for, it's, it's the rules for what, if you're gonna do that, what then, so I don't, I don't, I see them two separate things myself, but, um, you're gonna have to convince me otherwise that they're, that they're not, but, cause I mean, a comprehensive land, you, you revise ordinances, right, uh, uh, or a comprehen- com- comprehensive land use plan isn't something you do regularly.
Ours, the current one for Mercer County is extremely out of date, and so with the situation where you're kind of putting together ordinances based upon a land use policy, that's probably fifty years out of date, um.
But it's not, it's nineteen eighty-six.
Yeah, so that's what I mean, it's.
It's not fifty years, but, so, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is you're gonna have a hard time convincing me that there, that, that, that you have to have one, anytime you do this, you have to re- redo your land.
I don't think you have to redo it every time, but I think in this instance, because it's been so long, that it might make sense to say, hey, let's make sure that our land use is up to date and that it ties together with our ordinances, um, the way that we want, and we have not dove into the land use at all, and so I don't know what kinds of issues there may be in there, cause that's not been where we've spent any time, um, but I do know that that's as out of date as your ordinances are, and so with that, I think that we would wanna be in a position where we're looking at these to say, okay, is this set of ordinances consistent with what the land use is currently, or what do we need to change? Do we need to make some changes to ordinances, or do we need to make some changes to the land use? How do these things, how do these two separate documents coexist?
No, I, 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 I don't follow that though, because literally, no matter what, you're gonna have, you have ordinances no matter.
Absolutely, you are.
That's the rules, it's the, it's the roadmap and the rules, right? And to me, that's where the exposure is at, if, it's not that your land use is out, out of date, it's that your ordinances aren't keeping up at the times because of the different things that are coming.
There can be, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but there can be litigation that can occur, not that I'm foreseeing that Mercer County's gonna deal with litigation, but there has been historically some litigation where ordinances fall out of the scope of the land use or vice versa, to where, um, in the eighties, we didn't have things like data processing centers, wind energy really wasn't a thing.
Doesn't matter, it's industrial, and so what I'm saying is, is you still have industrial land uses, the terms of, but what's within industrial has, has changed in, in the different scope, but we, we need rules in place, cause this stuff is coming at us, and so the land use itself, to me, is, 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 is a whole separate deal to this. And I, I don't think we have a year from now to have, to, to, to wait till everything is comprehensively done. We're gonna have something that comes at us within the next probably six months, that we need to have some, our ordinances in place so that we have actually, um, a guideline to go off of, and I don't, I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you that, I, I don't see what needs to be done as requiring an additional scope, when I think well within the scope of what we have here.
I think you are, are, we're within the scope of what you guys have contracted, um, but I think that it would, I think that you also still need to do something with your land use, and I think that, um, if I was in your guys' shoes, I would want those two things passed at approximately the same time, um, just to make sure that those two documents work together the way that they're intended, because they are a land use and the county ordinances, I mean, those two are supposed to work hand in hand together with each other.
But you're not gonna redo your land, your comprehensive land use plan every time you revise an ordinance, and that's, that's what I'm saying.
But when you're doing such massive changes to your ordinances, that might be the most appropriate time to say, okay, we need to have a look at the land use, we might need to. If, if you were just telling me, hey, Mark, we need a solar ordinance, we need that for a solar farm, I would agree with you wholeheartedly, but this is, this has been a pretty bit large-scale project, um, to where I think it would make sense that they, that a person takes another look at that to make sure that they work with each other, um, if we were picking one or two or three things that we're saying, hey, we're updating these three things, I would agree with you, but given the scale of this, I think it might make sense to say, hey, let's make sure that all of these work together. Um, now, that being said, if you're saying, hey, we don't like this May timeframe, can, what can we do to shorten that up? Can we maybe have a, a March or an April deliverable on all of this? I think that would be a conversation that we could absolutely have, if, if that's the concern that you guys have.
I don't know what concern I do it, I don't know what concern I do it, don't have, but, you know, I haven't had a chance to go through all this, but you're not proposing massive changes here.
There's some significant additions and changes in there.
Correct, but what I'm, but what I'm saying, what you're, it's, it's in, it's in certain areas, and so it's not like it's a, what I'm saying is you're not, you're not proposing a massive overhaul here, that's necessarily warranting what you're saying with the land use plan, so I don't know if we have enough information yet to say, let's add another hundred thousand to this.
Okay, when you get to the land use thing, are you proposing or not changing, or not looking at it? I mean, I'm not, I'm not following what you want as a solution.
I think it's a whole separate, a total separate issue, is what I'm saying. They're not tied together. So, if we choose to go out and, and, if we choose to go out and, and rebid the work for, for the land, the land use plan, I, I don't think it's necessarily tied to what we had asked for in this scope of work, is what I'm saying.
Okay, that's why I wanted to know what your, your end game is here, so.
So, I'm not, I'm not saying we don't need to look at the land use.
That's what I wanted to look at.
When you wanna get, you wanna get these ordinances updated and in place, and.
Yeah.
Then we can look at the land use.
I agree. I think we made.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for, is the end game here, how, we're throwing things back and forth.
We chose.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I think.
And what Mark is proposing is that we don't, so to speak, finalize our ordinances until we look at our land use also, which is a time, takes time.
Correct.
And you're saying, let's get our ordinances in place today.
Correct.
So to speak, not.
Yes.
And not push them off, because the land use could take some time.
I would say.
Okay.
The chances of something, whether it be a data center, whether it be a direct air capture, some kind of carbon thing, whatever, the chances of that coming at us in the next six months is pretty good. I don't think we have a whole lot of time to sit here and wait until.
To get our ordinances up.
Correct.
Right, land use, okay.
That's what I wanted to know what you're aiming for here, so.
Yep. So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't need to do that, I'm just saying that.
Let's get our ordinances and then.
And you guys think it takes time to schedule meetings, you wanna put stuff in the paper and, you know, all that, it's time to do all that stuff.
Exactly.
So, I think going forward, what I'd like to see is give a chance to have everybody on both the P and Z and this commission review this work that's been done, recommendations that have been presented, and then sometime after the P and Z has a meeting to give in their comments.
And I can see if I can schedule one like sooner, I can get a quorum.
But then come back to this commission after that.
The other thing that was within the scope of this amended agreement was coming up with fee schedules for some of the different permits and things like that. You guys will notice that there are areas where we have fees attached to it, there's been, I'll say, some research on that, but it's been pretty minimal in terms of what are our surrounding counties doing with some of these permits? Um, there was some fee schedules and stuff like that attached to that, so we could provide you guys with a little bit more comprehensive feedback as to what is everybody else doing around us, are we gonna be an outlier? Either way too expensive or way too cheap? We haven't really done that, there's, we spot checked a couple of them, so you guys will notice that there's some costs in there, but we haven't really done that deeper dive as far as what some of those costs should be on some of those building permits and so, and some of permitting in general, and so if you guys would like us to spend some time doing that, we certainly can, but, um, we just need feedback from you guys as to what you guys want, same with like the flow charts and the checklists and things like that, that are, I'll say, quality of life things for Jen to make it a little bit easier for her to have a quick reference sheet to make sure that we're getting complete applications, to make sure that we can, in a sense, condense some of her job down to one or two sheets versus having it be a situation where we're looking at, um, having to go back to the ordinance and go through that every single time, and, and so some of that's also in this amended agreement that's maybe a little bit outside of scope, but I think is provide some quality of life, but we can't really do some of that stuff until the ordinances are finalized, so that we can put together those flow charts, so we can put together some of those charts, so that we know what that direction is, but that's the other, those are the other big things that were included with this amended scope of the work, is if you guys wanna provide some of those, I'll say, quality of life things to make Jen's life just a little bit easier, um, and planning and zoning and same with any developer, so that you can hand them the, the checklist that says, hey, you need to make sure that when you turn in your application, all of these things are completed. Um, and so that would be some of the other things that were included with this amended agreement too, and if you guys want that, we can certainly do that, if you guys wanna hold off on doing a comprehensive land use plan, or if you wanna say, hey, just focus on your ordinances first, I mean. Or if you wanna say, hey, just focus on your ordinances first, I mean, any one of those is the correct answer. Um, you guys are the ones that are making the decisions there.
Oh, again, I, I'd like to just, you had the original scope of work and I just don't feel that the original scope of work has been completed yet.
Well, I agree with you, the original scope is not done yet.
And so I think, I think we'd like to.
With, with Mark is saying here, part of the thing is, we started way back when, April? You know, or even before that, March maybe. We were looking at May and then we're looking at, you know, here we're in, you know, end of October, I would like to see. In the next couple of months, let's roll up our sleeves and get something rolling.
I, I agree with you.
You know, and then, and then let's see where we land, let's, you know, before Christmas or something and. And then let's get a, a look at where we're at and what we can do with the land use and where we're at, but right now we're kinda like. Sitting out here in limbo, you know, let's, let's just kinda roll up our sleeves and get busy, you know?
Okay, for, you know, fairness, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, don't come here with them criticizing you and all that. I'm just, I'm just not really to commit to county to spending more money.
That's fair.
When the original scope of work that we, we, we wanted, I don't feel we're there yet, I don't think we have a product to even look at yet. And it's unfair, I think, for us is, is looking out for the county taxpayers to just go ahead and commit more money to something when, when we're not really even.
And some of this could be run on, I'll say, parallel tracks where Jennifer Goss and myself are working on drafting some ordinances and things like that. Where Apex Engineering can be working on, um, certain things with the, like a comprehensive land use plan. Or do some research on fee schedules and things like that where some of that can be run on parallel tracks. Um, cause Jennifer Goss and myself, as far as the teamwork dynamic, we've been doing more of the drafting of the ordinances side of things. Where, um, I think Apex Engineering would provide more of the services on that side of things where, um. There, they could run on, I'll say, parallel tracks and. I'll say, I don't wanna say racing towards the finish line at the same time, but running together, um, trying to get all of this done. Together, um, and, and go forward from there, but that's, I certainly respect the position that you guys are in.
Add one more thing, I'm just like for, if, when we get together with P and Z, things like that, and that's something I think that, you know. Maybe Jen and Casey or somebody or myself or whatever, but I, I think in the couple of meetings that we did have. We didn't accomplish a lot, but I would like to see some, we should work on some. Plan or an agenda of an attack here or what we wanna get done in that meeting, you know, ahead of time, so I mean. When we get off track, we can point and say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cause what we had, what happened.
Try, we can try.
Well, I know, but I mean, if we don't have anything to point to.
Yeah.
We're really struggling.
And maybe what we need to do to help facilitate that is for us to come up with our agenda and our specific questions to say. Looking at this section right here, would you like A or would you like B? We can take this either way or do you have an idea C and have our bullet points that we can get you guys a, a week in advance or something like that.
If we're gonna, if we wanna get something done, we need to be specific of what we're gonna do, other than just sit there and. You know, throw, it's wasting, you know, not wasting time, but we didn't accomplish a lot, is what I'm doing.
That's why I was questioning if we should do like a joint board meeting so that we can get more, not. The telephone game of this board set this to come back to us and.
But I think, you know, even like in this instance right here, the things that, you know. I mean, we've talked a lot about this stuff, but you know, we've went over the same things, I, the meat and potatoes of this whole deal is, we need to get something done. You know, and the meat, and the other thing is, is that we need to have a plan and how we're gonna attack this and that's where we're at right now. Once we got that, let's get busy.
Yeah, I would, I would say let's complete the ordinances and then, um. Take it, take the next step. After that, um, land use, we'll do that after we get our ordinance, if. If there is a conflict, even with the ordinance, the ordinance can always be amended at that point. We can amend the ordinance, but let's.
But I think, yeah, before we get to, let's get something going and what we need to do.
Let's get our ordinances in place.
Your office and, and Jen can get together and get what you guys wanna see for questions and if we need to add something, we can. But I really strongly, we, we go to that meeting. If we wanna get something done, we gotta have something that we're pointing to, you know, say, what do you like you said, what do you want, A, B or C or? But let's, let's get something.
And I'm not gonna sit here and say, no, I, I'm, I'm sure we're going to proceed then with, uh, updating the land use portion also. But I think for now, let's get our, um, ordinances in place so we got a start, and that's what I'll call it, a start and then we'll, we'll. Cause I, I think as you've said, there's about a couple more, um, steps that we'll be needing. Wanting, I'm not gonna say needing, but someone that might be a need to take a, after we even get our ordinances in place, but we need to get our. We need to get our ordinances cleaned up.
So within the ordinances, there's a lot of different fees and things like that, um, do you want us to just? Put in there what we think that these should be based upon what our. Surrounding counties with the closest industry might have.
Yes, we want recommendations, yeah.
Dive on research, I mean, I, some of that could be a little bit short sighted because I would have. We're not looking at five or ten counties around us, we're looking at one, maybe two counties to say, what have they done with their fee schedule? And that may be good, that may be right on a point, that may not be, and, but that's.
But if you don't, if you don't say anything on that, in that group, we're not gonna answer that question. It's not gonna get done and I think you're important for you to say that.
And that's what I'm asking though is, do you guys want additional research beyond that? Or do you want, hey, this is what these two counties are doing, this is why we pick this fee?
I feel like there are two counties that have been drastically impacted in the last decade that they're justifiable to use. Is my opinion.
We have spent a, a lot of time, especially when it looks at the fees in particular. We've spent a lot of time looking at what they do in McKenzie County, Williams County and Stark County. Because they're the counties that have dealt with the biggest explosion of industry over the last, I'll say, ten or fifteen years. But that doesn't mean that that's consistent with what Oliver County or McLean County or Burley County is doing. I guess, I looked at it and I think, I don't mean to speak on behalf of Jennifer Malloy or Jennifer Goss, but from my own personal standpoint. I looked at it from the perspective of, these are the counties that have been down in the trenches dealing with the most. Headaches and things like that and so they probably have the, some of the best insights as far as. Fees and things like that go, um, does that make it the right answer? I don't know, but that's kinda where I've been and so I have not spent any time. Looking further east.
Well, it's, and that's. I don't think you need to, I mean, you got, you got, you got three counties in the middle of North Dakota that are unlike any other, other, the other fifty, Mercer, Oliver and McLean. Okay, and then you picked out three counties with exponential growth that are seeing a lot of this, I think that's pretty good from your professional opinion to look at that. But I mean, if you keep it within that scope, I think, I think that's pretty reasonable.
Right, because what we got going on here will, would be pretty much with the counties that all got mentioned as versus, you know, Cass County. Well, you know, what, what they have in common with us other than.
And, and I didn't mean to mislead you, but we have not looked all that closely at Oliver and McLean County, we've been looking more at.
I don't think you need to.
Williams.
Actually, I think you do because we're, we're so similar. At least some of these projects that impact us are happening right on the Oliver McLean line.
Yes.
That's where I was going, I think we should be looking, there's nothing wrong with what you did over west. But I think we should add like McLean or maybe Oliver, but at least McLean, cause we can see about where, where we were at versus where they're at. There'd be kind of a nice average there.
I just feel like they would follow suit if we did something drastically different that was for a reason and I think they would follow suit.
The problem with that is Oliver and McLean are out ahead of us on this, they haven't been doing a lot of, that's why I'm saying you need to look at them.
Some areas they're ahead of us and some areas they're behind us, um, it, I don't know that it's fair to say that they're. Blanket statement ahead of us, there are some areas where they definitely are ahead of us, but then there are some areas where I would say that they're.
Oh, I know, both, both of them have acted on amended ordinances in the last twelve months, I don't believe we've done that. And so, but what I'm saying is that.
But part of that was is our, our original introduction ordinance was not up to date with the century code, so we technically. Couldn't even do it without a whole step process.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's just my, that's just my recommendation is that you've got, you've got three, these three counties here, you're looking at three counties with exponential growth. I think that's a great base to look at, I think.
I would give those, those, those three from the east and three from the west, that'd give you a nice plan.
Well, I think in our preliminary discussion on this is we wanted it to be more uniform with McLean and Oliver and Mercer. So I think that was discussed early on also.
Okay.
But I also don't want it to be too low and they're just gonna continue to come here like Newtown's doing with the landfill. They're not going to McKenzie, they're coming here because we're cheaper. So these oil company or whatever, these industries are not afraid to drive their employees. Hours at times, so I don't want it to be that we're just like, oh, we're cheap, so go there.
No, and I think in your professional opinion, looking at those Stark and Williams and McKenzie County, I, I think that's great that you're doing that. And I think that's, you know, probably a prudent approach that you're taking to it, um, it just, you know.
I would add, add these.
McLean at least.
East to give us a kind of a.
And that was, that was kind of our directive from, from the front.
No, 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 let's go for it then.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything we need to take action on down here?
Nope.
I didn't, I don't think so, we just like get. Get our ordinances up to date and then we'll take the, the next step.
We will.
Well, one action I was like, what do we, what's, what is the next step? What are you gonna do? And what do you want to see done?
I'll see if I can do a special meeting sooner than later, since we don't meet till the twentieth, so.
But at the same time, I would like the P and Z board to have time to go through this too, because I'm assuming they got it at four o'clock yesterday also.
Yeah.
Right.
So let's get a plan, so the next step.
The earliest I see is if we can do something before the nineteenth.
So what my thoughts are is have the meeting be in two parts. One with a general discussion as to what P and Z sees as general problems and. Uh, address that second and then the first part of it, we'll have an agenda with. These are areas that we need direction from, do you guys want option A or do you want option B? And have specific examples that we can go directly to this specific page number. And you guys need to make a choice, do you want A or B or do you wanna come up with a different C?
And I would like to keep that noted so that we know.
And that's fine, but whatever that is, I think you have, need to have it distributed out and into people's hands prior to so they actually have time.
Going to say that we will get that to everybody a week before that meeting so that they know, so they can go back and look at the sections. And say, oh, this is where Mark and Jennifer, Jennifer are gonna ask some questions.
So if we can get that all done before the twentieth, we'll try, but, yeah.
I think we've got quite a few notes that you'll see in this ordinance as far as questions and things like that that we wanted to bring up. I think it's gonna be relatively clear, some of the directions that we're heading with this and then we'll work on cleaning that up a little bit more.
That's what I saw, you had a lot of notes, but I was like, how do we fix them, you know, rather than just.
And we can provide some.
Your recommendation, how we fix them.
Yeah, and, and we can provide some of those, some of that language as far as different options and directions that you guys would like to go. Um, and kinda have it be, I'll say, a fill in the blank as to, you want this option or this option or are you thinking something completely different?
The thing, the thing about it that comes down to it is like this, it's like, we hired your company, okay, the thing about it is, is that we're looking at. You know, you guys are a lawyer, a law firm and an engineering firm. And that's why we said, that's what we're asking for, is how do we fix this, what's, you guys are the experts. Provide us with a plan to fix this thing.
Yeah, what language will work, yeah.
Yep.
And, and, and some of those instances, multiple languages can work, but we'll provide you guys that, we'll provide an outline going into the meeting. So that you guys have seen it ahead of time and, hey, this is, these are the directions you can go. And then we'll get some answers and we'll have a finalized product for you guys.
Get a start.
Okay. Jen, I guess looking at the calendar, if we could possibly do like a P and Z on the thirteenth. And that would give this board some time to review what the P and Z.
Yeah, I can see if that'll work and we can get the room and all that stuff and organized, so.
If not, we'll, we're better off going slow and getting it right.
Yeah.
One final question that I would have for you guys and this is, if there's one area that I've gotten quite a few phone calls on. Is out at the lake, whether or not you guys would entertain the idea of. A, I'll say recreational residential district where you guys would entertain the idea of. Having smaller developments where they can sell, um, one acre lots or. Three quarter acre lots or something like that, is that something you guys would even entertain? Some of the internal discussion between Jennifer Goss and myself is, you would want to restrict something like that to. Um, I'll say a buffer zone within a mile of Lake Secocua and Missouri River or something like that where you're saying. Hey, we recognize that this has significant scenic value and that there's some pretty high property values that could go with that. That could help with the, um, tax revenue for the county, but if that's not something that you guys are even willing to entertain. I don't wanna go down that process of even providing you guys with proposed language as to what that might look like. I don't, that's one of those things, I don't know what the right answer is, but I can understand both sides of the argument where you say, hey. We wanna keep with this idea of a minimum of two acres or, hey, we'd like to make sure that. There are certain areas out on Lake Secocua that we might be more willing to have smaller lots being sold. As long as they're able to support themselves with water and sewer and things of that nature. Um, I don't wanna go down that process of providing a proposed language for that type of development. If that's not something you guys are interested in.
I think at this time, you know, they already have the ability to come and ask the board for exemptions. So I don't think that there's gonna be a one size fits all. Ordinance that's gonna cover all the different issues to where. I think at this time, we'll probably just move ahead with what we've got in the ordinances and then. If individual landowners want exemptions, they can come back.
But I mean, not everyone's gonna come in and, I would like to see is like, I'm just talking to a monster, like the west side. Like say up there, you got all those big houses on the point, uh, you know, up there in Buella Bay. I'd like, you know, you probably wanna protect that area, but maybe there's another area that, you know, you could provide with smaller things and different people.
Well, I think some of the stems from some of the mobile home courts that have been there since like the seventies. Or they've been passed down or they're tired of running the mobile home court, so now they wanna divide it and sell the lots and they're not even close to two acres. There may be a half an acre, an acre, so.
So it's a very.
And our ordinance is to solve that, so they're kinda stuck with it.
So then I think they should come on a case by case, but from each neighbor like we did with.
Case for at that point when that request is made, because we, we don't wanna grant. One entity that differently, then we're contradicting our own ordinance, but end the ordinance at that point.
And, and that's, I guess, the, the heart of the question is, do you guys want time spent on creating a. I'll say regulatory structure for something less than knowing the area is unique. Um, in terms of what that offers and what that can be, um. Do you guys want to provide, um, some avenue to address with that area's uniqueness? Or do you say, hey, that's something for a later date, let's see?
I would say it's something for a later date, we can address it and let's have that. Entity come to us and make that request.
Cause we can't offer the exemption.
And I, I'm not saying that it's not a good idea and everything. My, my, I'd like to see get what we have on the books cleaned up.
Right.
Is the priority first, cause that's.
We can address that if, if they. If we have a, a development out there that's owned by one person and then you wanna sell them off. Have them come to the, have them come to the commission, have them come to P and Z, we, we can amend that ordinance, we can change that ordinance. And, um, but, but we need, we're back to, we need to get our ordinances in order.
Well, that's, that's why I asked you that question.
And even if it says two acres right now, let, let's keep that in place and then. We can make changes later, we can, we can always amend an ordinance. And even if it says two acres right now, let, let's keep that in place, and then we can make changes later, we can, we can always amend an ordinance.
And, and that's why I want to make sure that I'm coming back with you guys with that feedback, because if you guys go, oh, yeah, that's a great idea, that we're including it in this round, or if you guys say, no, that's something that we can address at a later date, that's fine too, but I think I'd be neglecting some of my responsibilities to you guys if I wasn't bringing it up.
Fair, fair enough, Mr. Gayford, I guess, I agree that bringing that up is, I, I agree, yeah. Doesn't necessarily mean we'll act on it, but that, that's-
It's just, yeah, something that has been brought up and asked a couple of times, our office, someone else.
Let's get-
Tell them, bring it-
You can certainly apply, and I mean, but I'm not the one that makes it a thing.
Tell them to bring it to the commission.
Yeah.
And we will address it then, I don't like trying to, how do you even say it? Try, well, yeah, try and guess what might happen and let's write something around that, no, let, let's, let's get our ordinances in place, and if someone, if something comes up where we need to change the ordinance, we can change the ordinance, we can make an amendment. But let's, let's get our ordinances in, up to date now.
And I think this is a big step towards that, I mean, I think that, I, I really am looking forward to some of the feedback that we get from you guys after you have had a chance to really look at it.
Okay. Anything else that we need?
We'll see where we fall, and we'll, oh.
It's big.
You know, in, in the next six weeks and see wherever, you know, and then at that point, maybe we, you know, once we get some of these other major components put together, we might say, we better do something.
And that's fair, that's, that's-
And even when we get a chance to review it, we might see something that-
Okay, Gene.
We'll keep, uh, no, I, I think we need to get, let's get, get our work done and get the balances together.
Last question is just while you guys are reviewing this, would you like us to send you, I'll say, a double spaced version of this in a PDF so that you guys, it's easier for you guys to write notes in, or you find what, what we sent you as is?
I write notes on this stuff.
Yeah, I just, I've, I've been, I got circles already.
Whatever works best for you, I mean, I don't care one way or another, because I can look at it i- in our computer screen, it's just what's easiest for you guys.
Doesn't matter. Just do it.
We'll do as is then.
Good luck, take care, okay.
How you doing?
See you later, Mark. Okay. Oh, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Mark. All right, what, um, what's left here is portfolio updates, correct?
Yeah.
And Mark left, so that takes care of his, I'll do mine, we had a airport meeting, uh, last night, not much there. This, got a bid for the recycle and they accepted it, so, other than that, I don't have anything going on, Jamie?
I'm still working with Core Facilities on this building project for this vaporizer, we are, Jim is not getting answers from Core Facilities as fast as we'd like, so he's made a couple independent calls as well, and, um, sounds like we're still gonna try and now move back to this north plant with new tanks, but it's whether we'll run inside or outside and who will do the work, and it's just a continued delay by Core Facilities unfortunately, so, hopefully we can get that accomplished.
What I think with their propane question, were, were they gonna run liquid into the building and then have a vaporizer, or?
They'll put a, we'll get a new tank and put a vaporizer on it, we can't put a vaporizer on these old tanks, they'll back, and they're too close to the building.
Never used to have a vaporizer.
Just, just a minute, a va- the vaporizer would be in the building, would it not?
Or does it go on the tank? I don't-
I'm not a propane expert, but-
I'm not either, and, but we need new tanks.
On our grain dryer, you run liquid to the vaporizer.
Sure, the mess.
So, the, the, within, within there, you use the heat generated by the heater to vaporize the propane.
Sure.
So, it would be-
Our current propane tanks are too close, they're too old and too close to the building.
And the only reason you would need a vaporizer is because your demand for your propane is so high that the tanks can't produce it.
With these new boilers, they recommended a vaporizer for the winter months, and our old tanks cannot-
Okay.
Do that.
I think you're both right, just on different parts.
Yes. We just-
Well, been answers there, okay, anything else, Jamie?
No, working with Candy still on the fee stuff, I gotta get out to her.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Casey?
Um, didn't have a P and Z meeting or a water board meeting, but outside of my portfolio, I did attend Soil Conservation District's budget hearing, and I did attend the Bureau of School Systems budget hearing, and I'll just say we're not the only ones struggling with our budgets.
Okay, Rick?
Uh, no P and Z, um, the big, uh, we, we talked about, um, pretty much everything that's going on in the road department, I mean, that's up to date right now, sheriff's department, I have nothing to report. Sheriff Board, well, just getting back in action, uh, getting, uh, getting up here in the next, on the 5th of November, whatever, and, um, the one complaint I did have came from, uh, the extension office, um, their issue is, is that a point like this was in the paper that JDA was looking at purchasing, uh, mo- local links building, whatever you call it. But the problem they have there is they have, they said they've had a window, they've requested JDA to do repairs, they can't get the furnace fixed, they can't get the windows put in, they can't get anything done whatsoever with JDA, and they're really frustrated up there with what's going on.
Yes, they got money to buy it.
Oh, we can fix that.
No, I know, but I mean, yes, we can, but not today.
Well, okay.
But not today, but, yeah, but I mean, I don't know, and the other thing is, is that, you know, we are almost to the 1st of November, and the negotiation, we have no contract, uh, after the 1st of the year with, uh, JDA, with that, we have to do something one way or another. It's something that we need to be thinking about, I mean, we talked about it off and on all summer, but we haven't done anything yet this month. That's something that needs to be, not just forgotten about, put it that way.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
All right, meeting adjourned.
The wheels are clicking over there, what are you thinking about?
Well, so I'm, kind of what you were saying, I'm, I'm nervous with this, uh, you know, the, the ordinance thing, um, 'cause I remember the wind and the salt, yeah, that's what I was, uh, had all, and I remember going to P and Z and then going to county commission, and then the next P and Z, and I had to-
That's why I just think it's one of these-
Too much about having all-